Good evening and welcome to the January 19, 2022, meeting of the Lower Merion Board of Commissioners. And we have three meetings this evening before we get through, uh, just three meetings this evening, uh, the Finance Committee, the Building and Planning Committee, and then a Board of Commissioners meeting. Before we start, the usual announcements, please silence your cell phones. Uh, if you need an assistive living, uh, assistive listening device, it's available at the front of the room, and please speak loudly, enunciate clearly, and say the correct words, uh, so you can be heard through your mask. Uh, with that, we're going to start with the Finance Committee. We have six items on our Finance Committee, uh, agenda. The first is a resolution regarding the 2022 appropriations for the volunteer fire companies. I will start with a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners adoption of a resolution authorizing payments of the annual appropriations for the volunteer fire companies. Do we have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. Uh, I see Eric Traub, our CFO, on Zoom. Eric, do you want to, uh, share some comments on this?
Uh, briefly, this is an annual item authorizing those allocations, uh, that are in accordance, uh, with the adopted 2022 budget. We do it every January, um, and then the first quarterly allocation will go out this Friday if the Board approves the resolution this evening.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, Commissioner questions for Mr. Traub? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, uh, I will now call this for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Uh, looks unanimous, any opposed? Looks unanimous to me. Uh, thank you very much. We will move on to item number two, which is on page six on our, uh, in our packets. Uh, I will start by recommending to the Board, uh, making a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the appointment of the following persons to the bid opening committee of the Township of Lower Merion effective January 1, 2022 pursuant to the Code of the Township of Lower Merion, Chapter 5, Article 11, Section 5 through 70. Oh, Andrew S. Gavron, Commissioner, uh, V. Scott Zelov, Commissioner, Eric Traub, Chief Financial Officer, Jody L. Kelly, our Township Secretary, with the following alternates, David McComb, Esquire, Commissioner, Suzanne Brown, Assistant Township Secretary, and Joanne Drayton, Accounting Supervisor. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Zelov. Uh, Eric, any comments on this?
Another January annual item, um, just has to be done according, in accordance with Township Code.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, any Commissioner questions or comments? Any public questions or comments? Oops, uh, yeah.
Could you please amend that motion? Actually, Ms. Jennings is the Township Assistant Township Secretary.
Okay, so I will, uh, make a friendly amendment to my own motion instead of Suzanne Brown as one of the alternates. It would be Lori Jennings, is that correct?
Correct.
As Assistant Township Secretary. All right, and I will accept that as a friendly amendment. Um, any comments or questions? Seeing none, I will call a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say, or don't say "I," just raise your hand. All right, any opposed? Seeing none, uh, looks again to be unanimous. We are on a roll. Item number three, I will make a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the proposed 2022 park and recreation fee increases. I think this may go a little slower. Uh, Eric, do you have any comments on this one?
My tone is pretty, uh, brief. I believe Ms. Heller, uh, is also available for any questions. Um, we had, we usually do this in the, in the fall, uh, winter period. Uh, we wanted to wait until the budget was completed this year, um, to have all the information through the budget to, to do this update. Um, the fee increases are actually, um, a pretty small amount of the overall, um, fee programs that the, um, Park and Rec Department offers. You can see, we haven't changed any of these rates, um, I think since 2019, or maybe it was 2020, the last time we changed them. Um, we've kind of been doing that generally with fees throughout the pandemic. Um, but in some instances, we believe that some fee increases are, um, appropriate, and I see Donna is there. I'll see if she has anything else she wants to add from an introductory capacity.
No, I believe you covered it, so I'm ready for your questions.
Are there any Commissioner questions? Commissioner Courtney?
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. Uh, I asked some of this over, email, so sorry for the repeat. I'd like to know, uh, what's, what's the amount of revenue we're generating by increasing these fees?
It, it varies. It's difficult to nail it down, but we believe it's in the range of 30,000 to 50,000, depending on how many people register for the programs.
And the purpose of increasing the fee is to cover the cost of the programming?
Yes, that's correct. Um, one of our goals is to be full-cost recovery on operating costs of our programs.
Vice President Gavron, would you want comments and amendments now, or are we gonna, we want to work?
Uh, let's do it now. We already have a motion, or did we not? I don't believe, I did not make a motion, so, uh, did I make, I think I did make a motion. That's not, okay, oh, sorry, I made a motion, it wasn't second. Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. How about comments and amendments?
All right, we'll do. So, uh, the reason I ask those questions is, uh, for consistency. In my mind, uh, a fee that we charge as a township is, is not different from a tax in terms of its revenue generation. And last month, during our budget debates, we voted against a tax increase because we felt our general fund balance was too high for us to make up the multimillion-dollar difference between the township's revenues and expenses overall. And so I would put forth for consistency, there is no reason for us to raise fees while our general fund balance remains so high to make up a $30,000 to $50,000 difference between revenues and expenses when it comes to this service and amenity that we offer to our residents. So I would move to amend the motion to not increase the fees at all.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Bernheim second that. Any comments or questions on the amendment? Uh, Commissioner Churchill, who's?
Thank you. I would just remind everyone that we do have a policy for full-cost recovery, which, since I've been on the Board, I don't think that, uh, it's ever been, uh, enforced, but I, I feel that this is a, uh, if, if you don't want a policy, then it should be, uh, voted on and voted out, but we do have a full-cost recovery, and, uh, this is something that I will not support.
Thank you, Commissioner Churchill. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Zelov?
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. For, as we heard from Commissioner Churchill, it is in our policy, and more importantly, our approach, to having all recreation program revenue cover expenses. The Recreation Department, as Donna Heller informed the Board today, reminded the Board today, has a financial assistance program and has, for some time, for any income-qualified resident, there are discounts or even reductions to zero. Why would we subsidize those who are able to pay, those with higher incomes, when we have a program to support those who are income-qualified? Some of these fee increases are for non-residents of the township. Why wouldn't we be more than covering expenses for those who don't live in our township? And in fact, this is extremely consistent, because a tax is not optional. If you own property, you have to pay the real estate tax. Participating in a recreation program is optional, and it is a benefit, of course, that we offer to all residents who choose to participate, but in a township with a population of over 60,000, some participate and many do not, because of their age or their interests. I think we should proceed with the motion as made.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Zelov. President Sinai.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gavron. So, so Commissioner Courtney's, uh, amendment, which I appreciate in spirit, it begs us to, to be inconsistent. I'm going to deny him that satisfaction. Um, the, the, for the same reasons that I was in favor in, of a tax increase before, uh, which was that we should be effectively paying for what we eat, um, I think still applies here. Another reason I was in favor of a tax increase for, just in general for our budget, was that, you, the, the difficulty of not doing it now is that it becomes much of a more onerous jump later. And I think if you look at fee increases, one of the things that gave me pause when I first looked at them was that they are sizable this year, uh, but they're sizable in large part because they were not increased before during the pandemic when we thought it was important not to raise them, uh, and we're having that jump now. And I fear that if we defer that in the future, whenever an increase does happen, it's going to be too large. Uh, so I'm going to be in favor of this. I think the, the other reason for it is, is as Commissioner Zelov said, um, you, one reason to, to have the fees approximate the cost of providing the service is so when people make a decision of whether to engage in it or not, uh, in the activity or not, they're, they're correctly pricing it. For example, if we provide it for free, we would have tremendous take-up of the program, and it would become ever more expensive. We'd have to do a lot more service, right? So we want to keep the, the price kind of comparable to our cost, so we can keep that in balance.
Great, thank you, President Sinai. Any other, Commissioner Kramer, Sean Kramer?
I'd just like to note, this is at, at least the second time that that, this policy's come up of, you know, having full-class recovery for park services.
Commissioner Kramer, would you like to speak up?
Can you not hear me?
Go ahead, louder.
Is that better? Sorry. Um, this is at least the second meeting in which we've talked about, you know, that the cost recovery policy for park services, and, uh, I don't know what the proper process would be for this, but I'd like to see us, we, you know, talk about this, um, that policy in full, rather than trying to make these decisions on the fly, but I do think it's worth, uh, visiting. I think that some of our park services costs are prohibitive, even for people who, uh, don't qualify for, for financial assistance, so I would, I would hope that we would, uh, talk about this at a later point.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer.
Uh, Commissioner Bernheim, thank you very much, and Commissioner Kramer proving right out of the gate her value, because the, the reason that I, I seconded this motion was to make sure that we had this discussion. And the discussion is, Commissioner Churchill has pointed out, we have had a policy regarding the, these programs or our pools, that it is self-sustaining. And the reason that when the pool fees would come up year after year, we'd have this discussion, should it be an amenity or is it self-sustaining, and we'd repeat the same debate year after year and refer to this as Groundhog Day, until Commissioner McKeon and others were able to come up with a program for the pools, we have to decide, all right, has the time changed that the Board wants to take a look at that policy and alter it? And it doesn't have to say that it's 100% through taxes, it can be a portion of it through fees or whatever, but it is something that we should put on our to-do list, because it comes up, and we may have reached the saturation point, where I agree with what Commissioner Zelov says, where you have non-residents, they're not contributing tax-wise, but they're getting the benefit of our, our amenities, we should do something about it. As Donna Heller will tell you, that earlier this morning, we talked, for example, about West Mill Creek Park, and how that particular park, while we constantly hear about problems of automobiles and parking, the real problem there is overuse. The park is being literally destroyed by overuse, and the overusage is coming not primarily from our residents, although they are major contributors. So we need to put all of this together and decide, what part is amenity, what part do we want to say is, is coming from our taxes? But as we sit here today, on this particular motion as drafted, sorry to upset you if I threw your curve there, Commissioner Courtney, I will end up, end up supporting it, but as our new Commissioner Kramer has put out, this needs to be on the to-do list. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bernheim. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will call the amendment for a vote. This is Commissioner Courtney's amendment to keep the fees all flat from 2021. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Seeing one, two, uh, all those opposed? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, I believe Jody Kelly counts better than I can. Um, are we good? All right, thank you. It looks like this motion does not, or this amendment does not pass. Uh, we will go back to the motion that's on the floor. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, are there any, um, comments or questions from the public? I did not ask that before. Seeing none as well. I will now call the motion for a vote. All those in favor of the initial motion, which is, uh, to have the fees as listed in our packet, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Looks like that carries. And Commissioner Courtney, can this go on the consent calendar?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Um, seeing how we have just been through items one, three, and four on the agenda, I thought it would be now a good time to go to item number two on the agenda, uh, which is, uh, the, I will make a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval authorizing the proper township officers to transmit to the tax collector the 2022 duplicate of the assessment of township taxes at the rate of 4.19 mils, together with their warrant for collection pursuant to Section 1712 of the First Class Township Code. Uh, Mr. Traub, any comments on this one?
Yes, just briefly, this is our, our third kind of annual January item. Um, the total assessed value growth is really positive. Um, it's about 23.8 million above what was budgeted. That equates to actually less than half of 1%, 0.3%. Um, really, the, the reason why is towards the end of the year, um, you know, we didn't have as many assessment appeals that were successful or had, um, as great of a reduction. So the number overall was down to the assessment appeals, and just for a, a one kind of benchmark to use, there was a, about a $12.4 million reduction in 2022 from assessment appeals. There's a $31.7 million reduction in 2021 from assessment appeals. Um, I think that partially shows the strengths of the real estate market, values increasing and things of that nature. Um, what the additional, uh, assessed value growth will equate to is somewhere around $95,000 to $97,000 in additional revenue to the general fund. Uh, so congratulations to the Board, you've, you've closed $100,000 of, of the budget gap already.
Thank you, Eric. I do have a question. None of the, if I'm looking at the issue briefing, the numbers you mentioned do not align with what I'm seeing in the issue briefing, which is on page five of the agenda, where it says 2022, um, kind of a 0.83% change. I'm sure I'm reading it wrong. Can you explain that to me?
Yes, so the 0.83 is the assessed value growth from the previous year. What I was explaining is that there's a difference between, we have to, when we actually budget for property taxes, we have to make a estimate in the final quarter of the year of what will be the total assessed value at the end of the year. So we basically kind of look at the, uh, third quarter report and make an estimate based upon historical actuals. We speak to the, uh, to the manager, we talk to our solicitor's office that deals with assessment appeals, and we make an estimate. So, um, what I'm saying is, that estimate that we had in the budget for the total assessment was 23.8 million below that 7.745 billion number. Um, does that clarify for you, Commissioner Gavron?
Yeah, thank you.
But the assessment growth was greater than we had budgeted, therefore we shall have greater property tax revenue than was originally budgeted.
Got it, thank you. I, I don't know if others will have questions. Before they do, since I'm having fun going out of order tonight, I made a motion. Do we have a second on the motion? Thank you, Commissioner McComb. Um, any other Commissioner questions or comments? Seeing none, any public questions or comments? Seeing none, I guess we will call this for a vote now. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Somebody in the audience online could have some questions.
I apologize. Thank you, Jody.
Ms. Seltzer, and I am promoting her to a palace.
All right.
And also Roxanne White.
Uh, Ms. Seltzer, the floor is yours. If you could start by introducing yourself.
Adrian Seltzer, uh, Winwood. Um, may I respectfully ask that when you ask for, uh, comments from the community, that you give us a couple seconds to find the raise hand button?
Your thing. I apologize about that.
Okay, and that, that's all I have to say on this. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Are there any questions or comments, Jody? Did you mention somebody else?
Uh, yes. There was Roxanne White, but I'm not seeing her on the screen now. Maybe she raised her hand by mistake, because it's, it's back down.
Okay, seeing no other public comments or questions, I will now call it for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those, oh wait, can raise your hand at the same time? Thank you, Commissioner Whalen. Awesome, all right, all those opposed? Seeing none, Commissioner Kramer, Gilda Kramer, I didn't see your hand raised either way. Uh, all those abstaining? I knew there was something there. Awesome, all right, we have one abstention. Great, thank you very much. Um, can this go on the consent calendar?
When, when you abstain, it's, you're just not voting, so you don't have a say about whether it goes on consent or not.
Oh, so I was asking you.
Oh, yes, it goes on consent.
There we go, you answered that. All right, we are now moving on, I'm on a roll here, to number five in our packet. Oh, man. Um, number five, which is on page 10. I will start by making a motion and then ask for a second right after making the motion. I will recommend to the Board of Commissioners the adoption of a resolution authorizing township staff, financial advisor, and bond counsel to take the necessary steps to incur non-elect electoral debt by the issuance of 2022 general obligation bonds, refunding, and new money. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Zelov. Eric, I believe you have some comments for us on this one.
Uh, yeah, so this is really a continuation of, we, we talked about, um, a new debt issuance at the November meeting, and I said I'd be coming back to you right after the budget was adopted, uh, and looking for a formal resolution, uh, to kick off this process. So this is the next step. Um, you know, a couple of highlights just really from the issue briefing, uh, so we have just under about $3 million left of previous, um, bond proceeds and capital improvement fund dollars. Um, we expect those are going to be exhausted, uh, may, probably by the end of the, I don't know, maybe early second quarter of, of this year. Uh, so we will need additional funding to, uh, for our CIP. Um, so right now, we're planning for mid-March, about two months from now, uh, bond issuance. Um, you know, there, there's two pieces to this, the refinancing to save debt service dollars, uh, that's going to be probably in the range of around, uh, probably around 11.5 million. Um, we provide a little cushion in the resolution, that's why that, that number is at 12 million. Um, and then the other piece is, is probably going to generate more discussion, is, uh, what's the appropriate level of, of new money borrowing? Um, so the staff has a recommended new money issuance up to a maximum of $15 million in the drafted resolution. Um, this would cover all CIP projects through the end of 2022, and this excludes any potential use of ARP funding. Obviously, the Board is still, uh, debating, um, you know, that issue later tonight, and has been discussing it for some time. Even if the Board were to use some ARP dollars, uh, you know, we have a rather substantial, um, CIP plan right now. Uh, you know, for the next three years, township dollars are anticipated to be, um, a little bit above $60 million. So even if you were to use all the ARP dollars, just as a hypothetical, to support the capital improvement program, there's still over $30 million over the next three years that you're going to have to fill through another means, and the vast majority of that is probably going to be through, uh, some type of borrowing. So, you know, when we borrow funds, we don't necessarily have to borrow funds just for a specific calendar year. Uh, we have three years to spend those bond proceeds, so there would be no issue in spending those bond proceeds, um, even by the end of, uh, 2023, um, but, uh, you know, depending on your ARP decisions. Um, over the last several years, as a chart in your packet, uh, you know, we've had a, a good run of reducing, uh, the township's debt outstanding. Um, you know, in certain years, though, we've also had increases in township debt, uh, because it's part of a multi-year plan to reduce that debt. We saw that in 2017, and then we didn't issue that in 2018. Uh, you see that, um, you know, again, in 2020, we issued a little bit of additional debt with the idea that we weren't going to issue any debt in 2021. Um, so even if the Board went up and decided, yes, we want 15 million in, in new money, um, you know, the overall debt outstanding at the end of the year would probably be just under 97 million, so it would still be lower than where we were at the end of 2020. Um, so that's generally a positive thing, that we've kept that long-term trajectory going in, in a downward, uh, direction. Um, just to note on the refunding, we anticipate that's going to save us somewhere in the neighborhood of about $525,000 to $550,000. Uh, we do want to get that to market sooner rather than later, um, due to the threat, uh, that, you know, you read about, potential increases in interest rates, they haven't risen too much recently, uh, but we do anticipate that, uh, later, uh, this year. That's one of the other reasons, um, you know, we, we have, you know, this general idea that it might not be a bad idea, um, to issue an, an extra million dollars this year, because overall, the total debt service that you pay on that might actually be lower than if you were to issue that million dollars next year, um, or in 2023. Uh, so the resolution that you have before you, um, has that maximum, uh, $15 million in new money issuance. What that does is basically set a parameter, sets a ceiling on what we can issue. Um, the Board can provide policy direction outside of the resolution that they will only want to issue 14 million, or you can also amend the resolution and change that, that $15 million, uh, number, either increase it or decrease it, depending on the Board's policy preference. Um, the only other thing I just wanted to quickly show, um, is something that the Board has seen before, I'll just share my screen, this is a Capital Projects cash flow, we've shown this to you kind of before, just to have an idea, uh, there's over 18 million in township funding anticipated for this year. In terms of the, the net dollars that we anticipate, it's about 13.8 million. If we were to do everything, the reason why we actually set the maximum even a little bit higher than that is just due to the inflationary environment, buy-chain environment we're in. Um, we just think that's, that's, uh, not something, um, you know, and also the interest rate environment we're in, we think it probably makes sense for the township, um, at least for this year. Um, so with that, I'll, uh, I'll pause and answer any questions the Board might have.
Thank you, Eric. I'll start with a couple of questions. One, you had, you alluded to it, but I just wanted to make it clear, you said this is a, this is a cap, really, that we're putting on, a maximum? If the Board decides, oh, if the Board decides to lower it at some point, what's the, what's the process? How do we, are we doing it? Are you doing it? What, how does that work?
So, so it works is the resolution, you, you basically put a maximum, a cap, on what can be issued. So the way the resolution is drafted right now, it's 15 million in new money, 12 million for refunding, so that's 27 million in total. If you want to provide direction, it can be certainly outside the resolution, it can be just a, a vote that's reported in the minutes of the Board, that you only want us to, uh, issue 13 million in new money, and that has the, the support of the majority of the Board, then we simply go forward when we actually issue the bonds, and the new money is only 13 million. It doesn't have to be a secondary action, or at least a secondary formal action such as a resolution, that's passed by the Board. If you want to issue an amount that's above 15 million in new money, you would have to, uh, take a vote to amend the resolution and then pass it with a higher dollar amount.
Thank you. We will have an opportunity before you actually issue the debt of, to come back and, and kind of adjust that number if needed in the next two months, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, my preference would be to have direction tonight from the Board, but if it's not something you feel you can give tonight, I believe there's another Finance Committee meeting scheduled February 2nd, uh, the first Wednesday, um, we can come back to that meeting at that point, um, and, and perhaps then have a, a final decision from the Board as to if you set the parameter, what is the right number, um, you know, up to and including that parameter.
No, I, I, so I guess I'm a little unclear with, with that answer, Eric. If we're setting the parameter tonight, and we say, yes, 15 million is the right upper limit, but we haven't then said 15 million is the right amount to haven't then said 15 million is the right amount to borrow. You talked about a cushion before, you know, 11 and a half versus 12 on the refinancing. When do we kind of say, here's the final number that we actually want to borrow, not here's the parameter and the upper limit?
I will need that probably by that February 2nd meeting, because later in February, we'll be meeting with rating agencies, and we would need to know that number.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then one other question that I have is you showed the 13-plus million dollars that we have, that we have in shortfall in the total of, I think, can you go back to that slide? I think it was what, 18 million of township-funded projects in the 2022 CIP?
Yes.
How does that compare historically to our projects? Is this a high number? Is this kind of average? Is it a low number?
It's a higher number. Yeah, I looked earlier tonight. I think our average over the last three years was more in like kind of the mid to lower 17, at least in terms of what's budgeted. What gets spent is always, you know, subject to bids and what gets delayed and things of that nature. We are entering a three-year period, as I alluded to with that $60 million reference, where we have a larger CIP. You know, that's, that's fine if that's what the board feels is warranted. Also, you know, with the ARP dollars, obviously, that's a secondary financing source, and, you know, we do have an ample general fund, fund balance right now. So as we did in 2016 and in 2018, you know, we tend to do it in even numbered years. Maybe 2022 is the number if the board wants to provide direction at some point later this year. We can see how the year's going, and maybe there's a future transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund as well. So there'll still be some options. But again, even with that, that 15 million number is going to be spent without a doubt unless there's a massive restructuring and reduction to the CIP plan within the bond spend down period.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner O'Neill?
This is more of a comment or providing policy direction, and I do have one question. So regarding the policy on that ceiling, I'm concerned that the $50 million number is too high. I think it's a ceiling that we don't or shouldn't go down that path right now. I think something in the 13, 14 million dollar creates an environment among us that's disciplined, and this is, this is the amount. If it's too high or exceeds seven projects, then pause and push it to an out year. And then related to that is the question, and that is what is the projections? Because we would, if we stay at 15, then we go up in '22 to 96.9. And I would rather we go to something more like 93, 95 instead of the full 97 million. And then when do we then get back down to the 90 million deficit, total debt number? How many years out do we see a trending in the right direction again, is my question?
That's subject to the future capital budgets of the board and the future policy decisions of the board as to how they want to fund the CIP. You know, we don't operate from a perspective of having a pre-described, you know, goal of, you know, reducing debt to X number by X year. That's not been something that the board has ever, you know, provided to township staff. We generally in past years have been working to reduce that number. You know, the, when we went down below 100 million, that was the first time we've been below 100 million in over a decade. So, you know, that's up to the, again, where we go in future years is up to future policy guidance from the board as to what the size is of the CIP that they want, and how do we want to fund that CIP.
Before we move on, Commissioner O'Neill, I'm going to hold off on comments and amendments until after public comment. So right now, if there are any other questions for Eric, Gilda Kramer, Commissioner Gilda Kramer, sorry, I'm trying to get the Kramers right. Your questions?
Yes, I have two questions for Eric. First, do you expect the rates to be higher in 2023? And if so, do you have any idea how much higher they would be in 2023?
All I would do would be parroting what you might read in any news story about interest rate projections. I think we've all seen over the last six months, Fed forecasting models and things of that nature have gone from maybe two interest rate increases in 2022 to three to maybe four. So the general consensus is that interest rates are going to rise over the next year plus to deal with what's going on in the economy. You know, I'm not generally in the business of projecting interest rates, but I would tend to agree with the general consensus, which again is something for the board to consider in terms of whether now is a time when issuing debt to take that into a consideration in terms of its overall debt service costs over the full 20-year period.
So what you're saying basically is that if we were to borrow more now, we might end up saving money over the long term. Is that correct?
There's definitely that potential.
Okay. So this, my second question is, is there any breaking point in the amount of debt that we refinance or refinance at one time that would be likely to get us better rates? So for example, right now, you're looking at 27 million either financed, new money or refinanced. Is there like a 30,000 breaking point where you could expect that you might get a lower rate, a better rate than at 27?
So I just want to make sure I understand your question correctly. So what you're talking about is the total size of the issuance. So
Yes.
The resolution is it's 27 million. Like, if you, would you get a better rate if you were at, you know, 30 million versus 27 or something of that? That's, you know, in, in general, I think in the neighborhood where we're going to be, which is, you know, over 20, but likely under 30, or even up to, even if you were to go higher, even up to 35, I don't think you're going to see any real change. I think you would see a change if you were in a lower bracket, say you were in a eight to 12 range instead of a over 20 range. I think you will receive, generally, what happens is you'll have more interest from more bidders, and generally, just due to the nature of the auction process, when we sell debt, that can generally lead to better rates than you would have had. That's just kind of a gut feel that I have and from talking with our financial advisor and things of that nature. The only way to really know it is to basically have the same exact credit price on the same exact day, with one being at 10 million and one being at 25 million, and then to compare what it is. And, you know, that in reality really doesn't happen. But as a general thought of public finance is, you know, a credit like Lower Merion generally will do a little bit better. It's not going to be huge numbers from an interest rate perspective, but generally will do a little bit better if you are at 25 million than if you were at 9 million.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Zello?
Thanks, Vice President Gavin. So just one question, and I'm not sure if it's for Eric or for our township manager. So the next agenda item is for this committee to discuss and consider allocation of round one of the ARP funds that we've received. And so to me, that, that ultimate decision will have an impact on where we land, on how much we should borrow. So my question is, if the allocation of ARP funds is approved as in stated in our memo, and I understand that's not a certainty, but if that is the case, what amount of that allocation would be expended in 2022 based on our capital improvement plan 22 budget?
I'll start and maybe fill in any blanks or anything that I might miss. So, you know, in terms of what the board has, has laid out in its memo, two of the largest projects to be funded with the ARP, the Ardmore Avenue Community Center Palm and Ashridge Memorial Park Master Plan, generally aren't going to reach construction until 2023. So there would be a pretty limited draw on those projects in the current calendar year. So, you know, again, with the ARP, you have until the end of 2024 obligated out until 2026. So it depends on a couple things the board might want to consider is, you know, if you're allocating those ARP dollars specifically to those projects, then those ARP dollars aren't going to be spent until those projects really have shovels in the ground. Sorry, my light went out here. Trying to be energy efficient. If the board instead opts to just make a kind of overall contribution to the capital projects fund, which would be allowable under lost revenue and such, then those dollars could start to be spent, and ARP dollars could reimburse capital program dollars in 2022. Ernie, is there anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think if you really looked at the CIP projects that are recommended for ARP funding by the finance committee, what would reasonably be spent in 2022 is somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.7 to 2 million dollars. So if the committee's recommendations are accepted by the board and approved to go forward, then indeed, you could probably bring the borrowing down by 1.7 to 2 million dollars.
Great. Thank you very much for both answers. Thank you, Vice President Gavin.
Commissioner Churchill had his hand up.
Thank you. If we borrow up to $15 million this year, do you anticipate that we will be borrowing more money next year?
I would say it's probably likely we would borrow additional funds next year. It's also going to be contingent upon what you decide to do with ARP dollars, if we do anything with general fund transfers. But the other thing, it might open up from the board's perspective is if, you know, we have a resolution on those sort of items, maybe the $15 million lasts the township much longer into 2023. Maybe it gets us to the tail end of 2023. Maybe at that point, you know, the board can decide to borrow in 2023 for the rest of 2023 and 2024, and then have a year where we don't issue debt. So again, there isn't, outside of the three-year spend down of the bond proceeds, again, as I, as I stated earlier, I don't anticipate any problem meeting. You know, from a, it's really down to a board policy decision and policy guidance as to whether or not you'd want to borrow dollars now versus borrow actually dollars a little bit earlier next year or later next year.
Okay, thank you. And also a follow-up question. 2022 and 2023, we are retiring about how much debt per year. Is it like eight and a half, nine million?
It's around about 8.6, 8.7 million dollars per year right now.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Churchill. Any other questions? Commissioner Courtney?
Thank you, Vice President Gavin. Eric, I'm curious about your choice of the $15 million number. We saw that we need 13.8 to cover this year, and we're also aware that interest rates are at a historical low and likely to go up. Is there, what led you to 15?
Well, you know, it's a number, A, that I'm confident can get us through this calendar year. It's B, also because of some of the still-to-be-determined-by-the-board allocation of ARP dollars, which could bring a significant amount over the next few years into the capital projects fund. I think it also provides some flexibility to the board if, as some have suggested in the past, we do want to use any of the general fund balance to provide some kind of pay-as-you-go funding. And I feel it's a, a number that also allows us to have more than adequate dollars to fund the CIP, but also doesn't bring us, you know, anything near a, an increase to debt that to the rating agencies would set off any alarm bells, especially when we point out to them the long-term or the multi-year, look at the last five, six years projections, or five, six years trend in the township's debt. So in general, we felt like that was the kind of the right equilibrium point. But again, we bring these forward to the board, and then you listen to what we have to say and ask your questions, and then you decide if that is the right point, or if you think the right point might be higher or lower.
Thank you. I appreciate that additional color here.
I'm looking at your table on the second page of your memo that shows how our total debt has changed over the last five years, six years. When I look at 2021, that number I think of as sort of an anomaly based on our choosing not to borrow and reducing the amount of CIP we did in 2020. So my question for you is ignoring that 2021 total debt number, how much could we borrow and still be flat with the 2020 number?
Probably right around 17.25 million.
And if we were to stay flat with the 2020 number, do you think our credit rating agencies would frown upon that or would be fine with that?
I don't think it would cause any major concern, in my opinion.
And from a
Policy perspective, I think I heard you say this, but just in case you're repeating yourself, do we have any stated board policy at what level our debt should be?
Not in numbers. What the debt policy does say is that the board should take into account any potential impacts on its credit rating when it talks about debt and levels of debt. But there is no prescribed level that we should try to remain under 95 million, under 105 million, anything of that nature.
Putting all of that together, we could borrow up to $17 million and still be within the board's stated policy of having a favorable credit rating. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think so. And again, when you talk about credit ratings, I say this frequently to the board, remember, the most important thing is the health of the local economy and the demographics and the high median income, the high housing values, the strength of local economy, the lower unemployment rate than the county, regional, state averages. Those are the most important credits, is, or most important credit factors. Is debt an important credit factor? Is fund balance an important factor? They are. But those things that I mentioned about the local economy are the most important thing.
Okay. On the slide that you showed us with the 13.8 million, $13.8 million needed to accomplish the 2022 CIP, I noted that your slide says that's for the A projects only. I guess my first question is, in the past, the gating factor of accomplishing our CIP has not been money. It's been staff time and resources. Do we feel like we have adequate staff time and resources to accomplish the A project?
Yeah, and I'll actually apologize. That A project is really kind of a nomenclature from our CIP workshop for this purpose. I've just said adopted CIP projects. But currently, you know, where the township is, is we feel like between the township staff and the township engineers, we do have the resources to deliver on that, on the adopted CIP. Where we're likely just going to run into some speed bumps is because of things that are happening in the broader world right now related to supply chain and equipment availability and things of that nature. We've already seen that with CIP projects in the second half of last year. So we might not get to that 18 number because certain things might be delayed, not because of staff resources, but because of the broader environment. But we feel like at least at this point, we are situated that we can deliver it, but we'll see what the environment brings us as we go through the year.
Does that slide you show include any B and C projects?
What type of projects?
C.
As in building and
As in not just category A, but does that
Oh, oh, other cat, no. This is what is in the adopted CIP. So, you know, projects that the board did not include in the adopted CIP are not included in that 18 million.
Okay. And I think I understand discrepancy. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Courtney. President Sinami?
Thank you, Vice President Gavin. To, Eric, just quickly, so maybe you could just explain for me, what is the cost of borrowing more? for me, what is the cost of borrowing more than we, I mean, presumably we can borrow 30 million dollars in additional funds, assuming it didn't affect our credit rating. Like, what does, what does, is there a cost to doing that?
Your cost to that is kind of the interest you're paying on that debt while you're maybe not using it. I mean, we anticipate regardless of if it's, you know, 10, 13, 16 million dollars that we borrow, we're going to be using those dollars by probably June and July of this year. So I think you had asked a question about this via email, you know, first year of interest on debt, depending on the size, is probably somewhere 160 to 175,000 dollars. So, you know, that would generally be, you know, if you want to see that as the cost, however, and again, you're dealing with imperfect information, your overall costs over the 20-year payout period might be lower even if you issued more debt if interest rates continue to rise over time. Now, we also have been talking about interest rates are going to rise, you know, probably for seven years now. And, you know, they really haven't. So, you know, it seems like that's, you know, a solid bet, but we've also kind of heard that many, many times. But, you know, that cost of maybe 170,000 dollars is really the cost of that additional issuance if it's the direction that the board wanted to go from policy direction.
The calculation is you lock in, you, plenty at low rates, but not so much that we would be wasteful in paying interest on money that we couldn't put out.
I think that's a fair assumption.
Okay. Can you also just sort of describe how, like unlike corporate bonds, municipal debt, we pay back principal over time. And when does that, when does that kick in?
You start paying off principal, basically you make 20 payments beginning one year after the bond's closed. So these bonds will likely close around tax day, April 15th. So April 15th of 2023, and then each of the 19 years subsequently, we pay off basically, essentially an equal portion of the principal payment of the total new money issued.
Okay, so we can be like a one-year honeymoon on having to pay essentially 5% of the balance back?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, President Sinai. Eric, I have a question. You had said that if, to get us back to the 2020 debt level of about 99 million, we'd be able to borrow 17.25 million. If we thought 2021 was the new normal, term I've heard a lot lately, and really we should be closer to 90 million, how much would we borrow, how much would we be able to borrow to kind of keep it flat at the 90 million dollar amount?
Just give me one second here, I'm just, something else. If you wanted to do that, and I guess slightly correct my previous answer to Commissioner Churchill on principal debt outstanding, we are paying off 8.52 million in debt in 2022. So basically, if you issued 8.52 million, you would stay right at that 90.47 number. At the course of that, you add to the debt outstanding.
So you're recommending that we're probably closer to the 2020 number, if not all the way back up, but closer to that than to the 2021 number, right?
Yeah, I mean, given the size of the CIP, the board is going to be hard-pressed to kind of, over the next couple of years, if the board decides the size of CIP needs to be reduced, that's, that's one thing. But if you look at, just do the math, you got 60 million dollars you're looking to spend over three years. Even if you say, even round up, I have 30 million in ARP dollars I'm going to use, which don't quite have that much. That still leaves 30 million that you're going to need to spend over a three-year period. That's 10 million a year. That's going to have a natural increase to a certain extent to that 90.5 million that you're at right now.
Yep. Okay, great. Are there any other questions for Mr. Traub? Seeing none, let's go to the public, see if there are any public questions or comments. I see none in person. Jody, do we have any online?
I do not see anybody, but let's wait a second.
All right. Okay, let's go to any commissioner comments or proposed amendments or anything in those lines. Do I see any? Commissioner Courtney?
Thank you, Vice President Gavin. I would, in my opinion, the way we do our CIP should really be based on one critical constraint, and that's staff resources and time. In the past, we've seen that we've adopted projects that funding was never a problem. We have a large general fund balance above our stated policy goal. We now have ARP money. We have an excellent credit rating that allows us to borrow money inexpensively. It's never really been, in recent history, at least in my tenure, an issue to cover projects from a dollar's perspective. It's always been about staff time. And so I think we should take that approach here and look at what our staff can accomplish. And it looks like our staff can accomplish about 13.8 million additional dollars worth of work. And so then the question becomes, how, you know, what would make up that 13.8? And that's when we get into, well, do we borrow because the interest rates are low, or do we use general fund dollars? Do we use ARP money? Some combination therein. And in my opinion, we should be taking advantage of these low interest rates. And the reason for that is, for one, it will free up ARP dollars for uses of immediate impact in the community. It will allow us to provide funding to nonprofits and other organizations that can give relief to members in the community who have been most directly hurt and impacted by the events of the last two years. And so I would be in favor of keeping the cap where it is, where Eric recommended, around 15 million, to give us that flexibility and optionality and take care, take advantage of these low interest rates. And if our staff proves, as they usually do, to be quite efficient and exceed our expectations, we do have a little wiggle room of money left over to spend there. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or proposed amendments? Seeing none. Commissioner Zella?
Andy, Vice President Gavin, thank you. I just want to emphasize, I guess underscore what we heard from our CFO as regard to the amount to borrow, is that there are multiple sources of funds for our capital budget. There always are. The added source is ARP funds and allocation of those funds, both Rounds 1 and Round 2. Round 1 to be discussed in moments. We also have our general fund balance and we have, we have, we have the source, Eric, can you put up your other, the slide with the numbers on it? We have the transportation funds.
The liquid fuels.
Thank you, liquid fuels tack. That's another source. We also, as Eric pointed out, are perhaps going to be limited in what we can accomplish in the way of capital project advancement by the supply chain constraints. I understand our Public Works Director let the staff know recently that projects for 2022 should get moving quickly because of supply chain constraints. Projects that we have already approved are being constrained by the supply chain. So those all serve to underscore the 15 million that Eric and Ernie and staff recommended as a maximum, and I support it.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Zella. Seeing no other comments, I will call this for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise, Commissioner Wellen, you're killing me tonight. Is that, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
Is he voting two or three times?
I have no idea. He's voting no times. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Seeing one opposed. Great, that motion carries. Can that go on the consent calendar, Commissioner O'Neill? Great, thank you very much. Can that go on the consent calendar, Township Secretary Kelly? Thank you very much. That brings us, actually, I know the Building and Planning Committee was called for approximately 7:30, so should we just skip the last item? No, okay, we'll just go to the last item. The last item on our finance agenda, number six, is about the American Rescue Plan allocation. Just want to kind of give an overview of how we're going to tackle this, because I'm sure it's going to be the most involved one of the evening. First, we're going to have a little introduction about what this is about and the process we've done. Then we'll take questions from the Board of Commissioners, or at least from this committee, committee of the whole. Then we will take public comment, follow that up with a motion and hopefully a second as well, and then board comments and any proposed amendments to it. So we will start with an introduction about the ARP or American Rescue Plan. I'll turn it over to our Township Manager, Ernie McNeely.
Thank you, Vice President Gavin. Just a couple of comments to remind the board. I know we've talked about this multiple times, but there's essentially four general areas that ARP funds are allowed to be used in for, in the legislation. Whole lot of categories within some of them, but four general areas. And one is to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households or small businesses, nonprofits, or aid-impacted industries. Secondly, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to those workers. Third, for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue from the COVID-19 health emergency, starting with the measurement period of comparing 19 versus 2020, and then you make an additional comparison each year. And then fourth, to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure, and sewer includes stormwater. So those are the four main categories in the legislation that allows you to spend ARP dollars. Certainly in terms of reporting, we have reporting requirements to the federal government, and we have additional reporting requirements when we talk about perhaps giving the money to another entity. So then we have to have contracts and reporting requirements and documentation so that when we're audited, we can provide that sort of documentation. But there is a process by which you compare your revenue loss, and, you know, I'll let Eric talk about that because he's done the calculations for us. We know we've already done the calculation for the first year and freed up a little better than 11 million dollars out of the first 12 million dollar plus that comes. So when you free up that money, that sort of allows you to spend it for just about any governmental purpose with a few restrictions, like you can't spend it on pensions, you can't spend it on lawsuits. So anyway, I'll turn it back to you and perhaps have Eric continue.
Great, thank you very much, Ernie. And Eric, do you want to add anything into that?
Yeah, yeah, just briefly, I'm just going to talk, about two weeks ago, the final rule for ARP was released from the Treasury Department. It does, in general, the way you could surprise it, is it does provide some increased flexibility in various different areas. The other thing it does from the township's perspective is actually provides even more ability to use lost revenue as a potential category, which Ernie was kind of alluding to, kinds of frees us up a little bit more in terms of where you can allocate dollars. And one of the reasons for that is because they actually have increased the annual inflator on your base revenues from just over 4% to 5.2%. So I'm going to very briefly just share something with you to kind of illustrate this fact. So this year looks at only our general fund, which when you talk about lost revenue from an ARP perspective, is probably about 2/3 to 70% of our revenue that goes into it. There's a whole host of things of which I won't get into on regulations of that. So what you do is you have, your 2019 is our base year, which we're very fortunate, Lower Merion, our base year was a very high year from a revenue perspective, and you'll see how that benefits us. So then what you do in ARP is you calculate what they call counterfactual revenue. And basically what that does, it inflates that base year by 5.2% every year, and then you compare that to what your actual revenue is, and the difference is your revenue loss. So you look at 2020, which is the only year where we have actuals, and this is just the general fund. So our revenue loss on an ARP basis, just in the general fund, was 13 million. So Manager McNeely was just mentioning, we thought we had initially about 11.7 under lost revenue that we could calculate. Based on what's happened in the last two weeks, that number's probably going to be closer to 12.7 million. And you can see, what I tried to do here is basically use projections of what did we project for general fund revenue in the budget. So for 2021, our estimate 2022 budget, our forecast, and what would that be versus that counterfactual revenue? What that shows is, like, the revenue loss is likely going to be pretty substantial. It's going to be much lower in 2021 because we had such a strong year. I don't even think it's going to be near this, I think it's going to be lower than the 6 million when we're all said and done. But this kind of graph right here, I think, might help you kind of illustrate. So basically, these arrows here, that's the variance that you can use in each year for lost revenue. Now, what has to happen when we go through and do this is, after the year is closed, when we go through and do our audited financial statements, we use that information, those audited financial statements, to use kind of a calculation to formalize what that lost revenue is. So we won't know the final 2021 lost revenue until some point in the second quarter of 2022. But basically, even if our revenues perform better than anticipated, what this generally shows me is based upon the latest guidance from federal government, and you look at the lost revenue here and just add up a few of the years, there's definitely the potential for the township to basically spend its total sum of ARP dollars via the lost revenue category. That looks like it will be an option. The board obviously has ultimate policy discretion with these dollars and can use any of the four categories Ernie mentioned. But this one, again, just provides you with the ultimate latitude and flexibility. So I thought that might be helpful for the board to kind of just understand, you know, the blue line here is kind of that counterfactual revenue, and then the red, the black line is kind of the revenue we had in 2020 when everything went down, the rebound we had in 2021, and we'll see how much, how far we drop and how far we recover going forward. But in general, even with better-than-expected performance, you know, there's a good chance that we'll be able to really maximize lost revenue through this process. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Vice President Gavin.
Thank you, Eric. And I'm going to also talk a little bit about the process. I'm not going to get into the ideas at this point and the recommendation that was made by the Finance Committee leadership, but more from a process standpoint. So this really has been an unprecedented amount of money given to the township by the federal government as part of this, this program. 25 million dollars, as we've said, over two years. So some received in middle of 2021, some will be received in 2022. So what, as a board, what we decided to do was, Finance Committee leadership met with our Township Management to kind of allocate the money that was received in 2021. So we said, we're going to hold off on the second half of the money because there were a lot of unknowns, both in terms of what our township revenue would be and how we could allocate that money, and also too, because we still hadn't received final regulations on this money, which, as was previously said, we only recently received. So we were working under as good information as we had, so we decided to look at just the first half of the money. So tonight, we're only going to be talking about the 12.75 million dollars that was received in 2021 and a proposed allocation for that. We're not talking about the second half of the money. For that process, what we're going to do is that that money should be received mid-year in 2022. Again, the Finance Committee, or potentially another ad hoc committee to be, to be determined how, you know, how it's going to be done, will be looking at that second half of the funding and any, any remaining balance of funds from the ARP, and working, again, with the, with the Board of Commissioners, with the public, getting input on potential ways, now that we have final regulations, on how to spend that money, you know, as a township. So that's going to be part two. That's for later, not necessarily this time next year. It could be throughout the year. It could be done in pieces. It could be done as part of the budget process again. That's to be determined. But really, what we're talking about tonight is only the first half of that money that was allocated. So what, what the Finance Committee leadership and Township Management did was solicited ideas from the Board of Commissioners, saying, ideas from the Board of Commissioners, saying how, you know, this is, again, an unprecedented amount of money that we have received, how should we allocate this? And received about over 60 ideas from the Board, some from out in the township, some from different things that the Board has collected over time, and then evaluated those ideas on a number of criteria. First, as our Township Manager said, does it fit into these categories of what the purpose of this money was for? Does it fit into those four purposes? Two, the Committee kind of looked at it and said, this is one-time money coming into the township, it should be spent on one-time projects. This should not, if there's anything that's an ongoing project, an ongoing budgetary need, the Committee felt it shouldn't be allocated with this money because this is one-time money, and that doesn't match up very well doing one-time money versus an ongoing expense. And ultimately, came up with a recommendation that we will get to shortly, but really just wanted to walk through the process to finish this discussion and the introduction. Like I said before, we're going to go to questions now, then we'll go to public comment, then I will make a motion based on the recommendation of the Finance Committee leadership and go into that a little bit, and then we'll have comments and proposed amendments. So any Board questions on any of this, anything that was said, or any other questions about ARP funding in general? Kudos to Eric and Ernie.
Questions? What is your comments?
Questions at this point, Commissioner Churchill.
Okay.
Thank you.
So comments to you on a great job explaining, Commissioner Gilda Kramer.
Before you made this recommendation, did you conduct any public hearings or town halls, or do any direct outreach, did the Finance Committee members, the three of you, make any direct outreach to the nonprofit partners that we have in the community?
Commissioner Bernheim wanted to make.
And this is not the first time that I've heard this. This was, Vice President Gavron so well outlined, a program that this Board all agreed to over about a six-month runway, where each of us then were able to communicate, as we do with our own newsletters, to our own civic associations, with our own communities, the fact that we had received this substantial amount of money coming from the federal government, and all of us had our own independent outreach for that. We were then given a period of time so that each Commissioner could come forth with any recommendations that they wanted the Finance Committee to review in its process as it met with our staff. And that went on for months in a period of time. So while there were no, quote, "public hearings," each of us deal with our constituents within our own ward on a fairly regular basis and within those communities, and to my knowledge, everybody had a considerable amount of outreach, as evident by the fact there were over 60 recommendations that the Board made. And some people brought up many of them, others only brought up, like myself, one. So I think that the outreach to get information from what the community may have thought, so that we, as the elected officials, charged with the responsibility of trying to figure out how to allocate these funds predicated upon the Treasury Department's regulations, which keep rolling out, as to, most recently, we received 437 pages of direction of how to go ahead and utilize these funds, was done with a very open practice, one which had the most reasonable outreach to the community to get information, and then falls upon our desk to go ahead and have recommendations that we then have now our second or third public hearing on. So we're pretty transparent about this.
And to build on that, thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. To build on that, we have, throughout the fall and winter, we have had plenty of opportunity for the public to comment, and they have made comment before, you know, ultimately having this meeting today, and I'm sure today we will have, we've already received some public comment, I'm sure we'll have some more as well. So as Commissioner Bernheim said, you know, we rely on this 14-member Board, who is an amazing Board. I couldn't be luckier to have 13 wonderful colleagues on this Board, who take their time to reach out to their constituents, to reach out to members in the community, and really, we all represent parts of this Lower Marion community and together represent Lower Marion as a whole, and have relied on that process to come up with ultimately these recommendations from the 60 ideas that came in. Are there any other questions or comments? Or questions, sorry, no comments. I mean, you can have a comment, but questions right now? Seeing none. We will go to public comment. We received three public comments that came in in writing, they went out to the entire Board. I will just summarize them. One, Dan Goddessman wrote in support of funding roadway improvements in the area of Levering Mill Road. Michael Pollak of Ardmore wrote in support of funding improvements to the Woodside Road Underpass, and Daphne Scullin of Havreford wrote in support of funding Neighbors Helping Neighbors. So what we will do is, we will start with public comment in the room, and then we will get to online public comment. I want to remind everybody, we have had plenty of public comment throughout the fall and winter, and appreciate and encourage public to make comments. However, we've heard a lot of duplicative comments. If you are adding something new, that is absolutely wonderful, we more than welcome comments, but if you are, you are certainly welcome to any comments you wish, but if you are merely repeating what we have heard multiple times in the fall, I would ask that you think about being as concise as possible, because I'm sure we're going to have plenty of public comment tonight as well. So when you make public comment, if you could start by introducing yourself, where you're from. We do not have a strict time limit, but again, in the interest of time, I ask that people please try to keep their comments to about three minutes. And if you are representing a larger group, rather than having everyone from the group speak, if one person can speak on behalf of that. With that, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner Gavron. Laura Gillen from Havreford, and I will just appreciate your comments on the community as a whole. I do want to thank all of you, and I do appreciate all the thought and discussion and the outreach to the civics and the community members. I have been witness to that. I do completely understand focusing on 2021 and not allocating any ARP dollars to operating costs, but to only allocate to capital projects seems inconsistent with the intent to respond to the negative economic impacts. Capital projects, you know, including the new proposed ones, are all investments, they're all sort of forward-looking. Failing to distribute any dollars to outside organizations is a lost opportunity to apply funds to recovery. The Township has done all right, as we've seen. 2019 was a great year, 2020 we took a hit, but we bounced right back in 2021, and there really has not been a lot of loss of necessary government services due to the reduction in revenue due to COVID. But we do have people in this community who are still struggling and not yet whole. We have actually lost community members because they could no longer afford to live in Lower Marion, and many of them just couldn't make the ends meet. It's actually been the community organizations that have been most active and aggressive in trying to help them stay afloat. I would strongly urge the addition of a line item for grants to community organizations to supplement the existing care dollars, because the dollars are different, there are different parameters, and perhaps the parameters need a look. I would recommend a line item in the range of $100,000 to $250,000. I would suggest that a quarter of a million dollars to community organizations, taken away from $11,000, $12,000, or $13 million, is not going to put any of your other projects in jeopardy. The community nonprofits, and I will call out Neighbors Helping Neighbors in particular, have been providing necessary services that the Township just cannot, and these are vital services. I look forward to hearing a friendly amendment. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment in the room?
Good evening, my name is Linda Stevenson, I live in Bryn Mawr. I just want to affirm, as my colleague just did, the brilliance that is sitting on this panel. Thank you all so much for all the work you've done to come up with this current proposal. Like my colleague, I just want to ask the question, if you could line up Mr. Eric out there and the staff, like, the rationale that you all just went over from ARP and then the list of the projects? I'm trying to get my brain around it, I've been working on it all day, just trying to understand how health and the comments that Commissioner McNeely just outlined, how they fit with the trail and pickleball courts, which I love, I play pickleball, I walk the trails all the time, I think they're great, and I want them to be supported, but I'm just wondering if this is the right money for it. So that's one question. The other question is, and question slash proposal, is that perhaps the stormwater million dollars that you all have kind of a question mark around in the current agenda, could that be allocated this time around for the community-based organization work, as mentioned? And/or, if not this time, if you take the vote and you go with what you got, which I also appreciate, you put in a lot of hours on this, and that's great, when will those be affirmed? Could they be affirmed through the CARES Act, as it's mentioned also in the agenda? Could that be something that's put on, like, okay, we're going to do it, we're going to do it in March, we're going to do it whenever? Or will it come up for the next round in the second half of the allocations? Just wondering where that's, the plan is for that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment in the room? If we could ask, if you would leave your mask on, if you wouldn't mind, just speak as loudly as you can and into the microphone, we'd appreciate it.
Can you hear me well?
Perfect.
Okay. So my name is Esteban Romero. I live in Bryn Mawr, South Lancaster Avenue, between Lancaster and County Road. The reason why I mention all this is because I belong to a family that is a mixed family. We have Americans, we have immigrants like myself, and as such, I had the opportunity to visit all the communities within the area, particularly immigrant communities. And what I see is that we are embedded in an area very wealthy, but not everybody is having access to that. In South Ardmore, 10% of the people live below the poverty line. In 2019, 2021, the income, median household income, went down from 65,000 to 60,000. This is, of course, different numbers that the whole Township has. So when I visit this family, I visit also the kids, and not just from immigrant community, but the community in South Ardmore in general. And what I see is a lot of potential. I see kids that can be entrepreneurs, astronauts, but without the support, they're going to stay as a 10% below the poverty line. So I urge the Commissioners to stand up and help those communities. And I support Neighbors Helping Neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments in the room? Seeing none. Jody.
Hi, yes, hello?
Oh, where's that? Ah, that online? I guess we're into online comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Good evening, I just had a question, I would like to know.
I'm sorry, before you go, if you could turn on your camera and introduce yourself, say your name and where you're from.
Hi, yes, Cory Taylor, how you doing?
Thank you very much, Ms. Taylor.
Yes, I live in Arbor, Pennsylvania, and I just would like to know if there's going to be some funding that will be given towards those who are living in residential and in apartment, and also funding for students who are special programs, because my son attends Lower Marion High School, are there going to be some programs that are college-bound to help them prepare for college?
Great, thank you for those questions, and just so you know, we do is, we take all of the public comment and questions, and then we'll respond afterwards. So thank you very much for those, and we will move on. It looks like Ms. Seltzer is on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Taylor.
Hi, Adrian Seltzer, Wynwood. The good news in your plan is that it finally allocates needed funding to rebuild the Ardmore Community Center, a temporary building built in the 1970s. However, this plan does not address the community's current needs as capital improvements are completed in the future. As you stated tonight, most of the funding, if approved as it is, would not be spent this year. Might I suggest that there needs to be more discussion on how the ARP funds are done in a community discussion, a conversation? I think the comment procedure at the Board meetings is lovely for the Board meetings. Well, that might be a little bit of over enthusiasm on that, but it's not conducive to discussion, since the Board members do not have to even acknowledge that a resident has spoken, and the resident usually doesn't have a chance for rebuttal or additional comments or clarification. So I'm really suggesting that you guys do a community meeting like you're doing for the Ballack Kinwood Project tomorrow. The concept of one-time expenses is hopefully what helping the community is. There is an increase in income inequality in our Township. Currently, there's an increase of families of students who qualify for the free lunch program. COVID is still happening. I think COVID tests amass for those families, and having a public discussion that includes those without internet access, without a three-minute time limit, would be a way to continue forward. So I respectfully request that you postpone voting on this tonight until there is an actual community conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Seltzer, and I'm going to apologize because I don't have my glasses on and my, I'm getting older and older, my eyesight's getting worse and worse. I think that's Mr. Romero, if I'm reading it correctly. The floor is yours.
Hello, my name is Camila Romero. I'm a resident of Bryn Mawr and a student at Temple University, and I'm speaking on behalf of Neighbors Helping Neighbors. So I'll introduction into Neighbors Helping Neighbors, what it's done for me. Last year, at the beginning of the pandemic, or 2020 per se, not 2021, I started to do some work. Manira Walker, the Director of Neighbors Helping Neighbors, invited me and my mother to help out with deliveries, in which we'd helped deliver food stamp food to the communities of South Ardmore that are, that go a little bit under the radar. Our specific duty was to use our Spanish-speaking skills to speak to the families that were not so fluent in English, and this is all made possible through Manira's hard work in organizing all the families, organizing their addresses, who needed food and who didn't, who wasn't asking for food but didn't need it, and all other questions they may have. While it did start out with food, we ended up helping a few of these migrant families get their kids into school, and a lot of hard work went into it from, not my mom, Linda Stevenson, as well as Manira Walker, and Neighbors Helping Neighbors has done a great job with not so much help. So I'm stating the question if there is possibility for them to get a little bit more funding of some of the funding that has not been used yet and still has question marks around it. I think it would be a great aid to Neighbors Helping Neighbors, which would further, which would end up furthering being a great community, or a great community benefit.
Thank you, Mr. Godisman. Mr. Godisman, sorry about that.
You spoke of the Levering Mill Road piece, and I want to speak briefly about that. The impression was that I was in favor of that, and it may or may not be worthwhile. I wrote in that one of our most dangerous, if not the most dangerous intersection in Lower Marion Township is on Levering Mill Road, near the Kinwood Elementary School. Elementary School. I personally have had a near miss that could have been fatal. I've observed more than one, I think I've observed two other near miss incidents that could have been serious accidents. That is not within the zone which was written in the Levering Mill Road road improvement to be included. And I think that's a top priority as far as safety for our people. Looking at the American Rescue Plan, I do see, and it makes sense to me, that supporting the people who've really, who are really having a hard time, to a great extent because of the pandemic and other economic conditions, are listed up front. And it seems to me that's what's intended as the number one purpose. And yeah, we can make some infrastructure improvement, and we probably should, and it's needed. I think we're missing an opportunity to really help people who need to be helped, who are part of our community. And that there was not a, an identification of all of the needs through the well-meaning process followed, may suggest that we still have some opportunity to learn and grow. And we know that any successful entrepreneurial businesses do things, and not everything succeeds the first time, and they modify it and they change it, and they fix it, and they come out with something great, as we can and will here in Lower Marion. So I would also strongly urge that we extend this exploration of what the money should really be spent on, that would be most powerfully important for our people, and then make the final call on approving it. I'm happy as a safety, as an engineer who's been working as a safety guy for decades, to discuss with the traffic engineers the issues on that intersection, and my email has my contact information.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gottesman. Looks like Mr. Sneed is online as well.
Yes, sir. Commissioner, thank you. Hey, everybody. It's Micah Sneed with Ardmore Civic Association. Just wanted to clarify one line in the memo about how there's over $349,000 in unused CARES Act Community Development Block Grant funding, and somehow that's why ARP funds should not be used to fund outside organizations. But per the proposed CDBG-CB allocation table that was presented during the December 8th Grants and Community Development Meeting, there's only about $161,000 in unencumbered funds. Per the November 11th memo, you're waiting on staff to prepare information on the remaining CARES Act funds. So even if we split the difference there and say there's about $250,000 in CDBG funding to move around, we're just unclear, as a civic, on why that would sway you all from dedicating some portion of $12 million to outside organizations who are equipped to help people impacted by COVID and support the under-resourced communities and disadvantaged people in Lower Marion. The memo says the chairs didn't feel it was appropriate to allocate money to recurring costs, but we're a little bit confused about how that translates into either renovation or construction of Ardmore Avenue Community Center in the Palm. Isn't that going to create new costs, or is somehow the budget's going to be the same for those projects after whatever work that gets done? We're also really unclear on where even the feasibility study is, when that would be presented. And so there's concern about, you know, despite how thrilled we are to see you prioritize funding for this long-neglected community center, which will benefit everybody in Lower Marion, just questions about where would these funds go? Construction, design, consulting? It's not even clear kind of what happens next. And maybe I'll elaborate on that before this goes to the full Board of Commissioners. And finally, again, we just have to ask that you not repeat this process. All due respect to your email list and Facebook followers. I think you've heard the requests for engaged and meaningful public comments, whether we repeat each other or not. And so we'd like to see something a little bit more transparent, something like building and planning has begun doing with issue-based, or maybe even to use your own model from the budget workshops where people can attend and hear these issues being discussed, and really kind of get these questions answered, not have to come before you at this late stage. Just to wrap up, while the township has come through the brunt of COVID relatively unscathed financially, we know there's people and organizations in the community who did not. There's been previous public comment about the holes that people, households are finding in their budgets and organizations who support those households. People are suffering from one of food, stability, housing, transportation, and employment. And we ask that you draw a clear line for everyone in the public of how the use of these funds is going to go towards supporting those people and trying to make their holes full. So we hope you'll reconsider the recommendations as they're presented in this memo. And we look forward to robust review and discussion with staff and hearing about the data and some of the research that's gone into the impact of these funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sneed. Are there any other comments, Jody?
I see that David Kramer is online.
There is Mr. Kramer. The floor is yours.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for your time and thanks for your effort so far. I just want to reiterate my support for the previous residents' comments I've heard earlier in this meeting. I agree with everyone, and I am grateful that everyone is speaking out in this way. I just want to put in a plug for CIP 4097, the Affordable Housing Purchase Program. As you move forward, I would personally like to see a greater emphasis placed on this program, since national median sales prices of new homes was up 24% in 2021. And in just Q3 of 2021 alone, 18% of all the homes that were purchased were purchased by investors, not even homeowners. So there's a great need. And Lower Marion has exceptionally high home prices and a great need for assistance in this regard. So again, thank you for your time. Just a little plug for myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Is that all, Jody, or do we have more comment?
Oh, we have one more.
All right.
Miss Lisa Kolish.
What is, what is her last name? I'm sorry.
Kolish.
Kolish, Ms. Kolish?
Yes, hi. Hi, and thank you. My name is Lisa Kolish, and I live in Marion Station. And I am one of the volunteers for the Neighbors Helping Neighbors Program. I volunteer with an ESL educational program, teaching English to these families. It's affected 11 families, and the organization is affecting about 800 residents. There are about 40 volunteers. And I want to, you know, it, a lot of, has already been said, but I guess my one point is that a community is as strong as its most vulnerable residents. And my understanding that is that the ARP and the CARES Act were created to really help those kinds of people. So I want to reiterate that we need to make that a very high priority. And I know that this organization is working really hard to meet a lot of different needs, but I urge us to really pay attention to those who need it most. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jody?
I believe that is everyone.
All right. We will now turn towards this committee's response to public comment. Does anyone have any response to anything that was said during public comment? President Sinai?
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Gavran. So I'm sure that most responses are going to come up during our general discussion, but I did want to address some things. And first, it's to say thank you to everyone who has come out tonight and has come out on previous nights. We have an awesome responsibility here of figuring out how to allocate these funds that the federal government has entrusted us with. I'm not going to go through these specifically. I think there are some recurring themes. I just want to hit on some high points and then just leave the rest of the detail for the discussion for when my fellow commissioners discuss it. But I do want to, I do want to emphasize one thing, which is, we are allocating here not the CARES Act funding, but the SLFRF funding. And that is different. And I'm looking here at one of the 437 pages that we did get. And the intent of this program is to provide vital resources for local governments to respond to the pandemic and its economic effects and to replace revenue loss. And it's important to keep in mind that a lot of the things that people are very interested in here are things that do require recurring funding. There are funds for people in need, for families in need, right? And these are all good and valid and important causes. But when we get a lump sum of money here, there's a reason that is given for one-time effects. We have a pandemic that we reviewed as temporary, and we're getting money for the moment to deal with it right now, for those causes. There's a reason why I think the Finance Committee said, well, we should invest in capital projects, and why of the four items that are listed here in the legislation, that three of them are talking about investing in capital projects, which is if you invest in a capital project now, it provides recurring benefits going forward. It's a way of turning into one-time money into something that provides recurring benefit for a community. And so I would like you, ask you to keep in mind, because I'm hearing a lot of terrific suggestions, but they are ones that, that need recurring funding. And it's very difficult to say we're going to set aside 1 million of the, of the 12 million, perhaps, that we're talking about tonight, to fund some program for 10 years. We can't do that. We can't allocate $100,000 a year out of it. And it is really difficult to give money to something that is not dealing with a one-time pandemic effect and say, well, we have some money for this year out of the ARP money, if we're even allowed to do that. But it disappears after a year because it's not recurring funding from the US Treasury. So I think that's an important element to keep in mind as we, as we distinguish between these. And when we are, as a board, when we're thinking along those lines, please trust us, what we're trying to do is, is operate within the legislative intent and the regulations of the federal money that we're getting. The second comment is about, is about the broad solicitation of shareholders, of stakeholders in this. And I agree that it is important in this to hear all voices when we allocate this money. And I think the first round, we did a terrific job. That was evidenced by the fact that we got a lot, a lot of suggestions. And some of the terms are coming up here, ones that were previously made, right? And just when we filter through as a board, the Finance Committee did not bring them forward as suggestions. Not that we didn't know about them, right? They were part of the things that were offered before. I will say going forward, though, and it's something that sort of worked in my mind, that if we are going to be in the business of engaging all stakeholders, which is something I think is this board very important that we do, it does mean all stakeholders in the outreach to people who may not even realize that they're stakeholders. And I beg your forbearance this evening, if I look at good causes and I say, these are the good causes I know about, but there are lots of good causes I don't yet know about, and I want to make sure I hear about those before I allocate the money. And that is part of the decision that's going to enter into my process. And again, I thank you for, for bringing these things to our attention and letting us know about the community's support, and intensity of your support for some of these causes. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. President Sinai, any other responses to public comment? Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Commissioner Gavran. I would just like to say that I think that, yes, I think the Finance Committee did a, and I was.
Mr. Kramer, can you speak up, please?
I'm sorry. I'm thankful to the, I'm thankful to the Finance Committee for the fine work on its recommendations. I think that I understand the rationale for funding capital projects primarily, but I take a shit with it, because there is, there is immediate community need. And I understand that some of these needs are needs that will, will go on past the time of the pandemic. So I can understand not wanting, on that one hand, not wanting to fund those, because they will be recurring expenses. However, they need not be the township's recurring expenses. But we do have a pot of money available now that we can use to help our neighbors. And I think that we have a responsibility to at least fully consider how we might do that. And, you know, as far as those, those expenses being recurring past the time of the pandemic, I don't have an easy answer for that. But I do think that some of these issues have been exacerbated by the pandemic. And so it's incumbent upon us to, to contribute to those organizations that help those people.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Any other comments or responses to public comment? Commissioner Kramer, part two.
Thank you. I want to thank the residents for coming forward and expressing their views. And I also want to thank the Finance Committee for putting in an enormous amount of work and identifying many, many worthy projects, worthy capital projects that we should be doing. I have no issue with any of the capital projects that have been suggested. I support all of them. But at the same time, as I've said before, we need balance. And we need balance to address the immediate needs of residents. And that's why I will be making a series of motions later in this meeting to address those issues.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner Stevenson?
Hey, Mr. Chairman. I would like to also appreciate the comments that were given tonight. They were consistent with my feelings about our need to look at how we make sure that we address those immediate needs of some of the least of the in our communities. I know it's not an easy answer, and I know it's a complicated piece. As our president said, you know, we're dealing with a document of 400-plus pages. And I, but I think that, you know, 14 people on this board can be a part of a solution to address some of our needs, our immediate needs, and to work towards a longitudinal approach to some of the things that were described tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioner Stevenson. Other comments in response to public comment? Commissioner Zelov?
Briefly, Vice President Gavran, just to amplify the, on the issue or to respond, I guess, offer one more comment on the issue of how we reached out to the community. Most, if not all, commissioners attend at least one and several of us, several civic association meetings for six months, maybe more, maybe for nine months when we first learned about this. The issue of ARP funds has been raised by each of us at civic association meetings. And there has been, you know, some feedback, but the vast majority of feedback came through commissioners, and the list was some 60, as Vice President Gavran said, that what we were, we sifted through. And since then, there have been very few added ideas. And so it has been a long process of community reaching out by the 14 elected representatives to the vast networks that they have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioner Zelov. Any other comments? I will make some comments as well. First, also want to thank everyone who has spoken, not just today, but throughout the fall, throughout the budget process. We heard plenty of comments in November, November 7th, I believe, December 1st, December 15th, and, and tonight as well. And for, I know for a lot of residents coming up and getting in front of that stand or on Zoom is not an easy thing to do, and really appreciate everyone who has taken the time to do that and has contributed their thoughts to making comments and making their thoughts heard. And they have been heard. And I think we have gotten a really good input from the community. We may not have done town halls. We may not have kind of gone out and done that process. But we have heard not only the 60 ideas that came from commissioners, many of which came through residents, but also we have heard you through November, through December, and tonight as well. And while those may not be recognized in the recommendation from the Finance Committee leadership, it's not because they were ignored or not heard. It's because the Finance Committee leadership thought that this was the correct approach for this first half of the money. With that said, we are a board of 14 people, and there will be amendments tonight, and we will fully discuss those amendments tonight and have the opportunity for every single person on this board to make their view heard with their votes. And I am very confident that all of the ideas that we've heard over the past six months, nine months, will be, will be discussed and brought in front of us for a robust discussion tonight. Specifically to a couple of the ideas, and I don't want to get into responding to each individual specifically, but overall, there were some, there was a lot of talk about balance and how this really wasn't a strong balance between the various goals set forth with the ARP. And I echo what President Sinai said. And I echo what President Sinai said about the main imperative behind this money is different from the CARES Act. This really was to make townships whole. We are very fortunate as a township that we, while we were certainly impacted as a municipality and in our municipal budget by COVID, we fared a lot better than a lot of other communities, and we're very fortunate for that. However, there are still a lot of needs that this township has and that this money can certainly help out. And I believe there truly has been a balance. We received about $1 million in CDBG money through the CARES Act, through COVID, and every single dollar of that went to those in need, whether it's businesses or residents. That money went and is still going, as I believe it was Mr. Sneed said. There's still a great deal of that money left for those in need through community organizations, directly through the township. That's $1 million on top of what the township already does with their annual CDBG money and other initiatives, specifically for COVID, that went out to the community. None of that went into capital projects. None of that went into what's in the recommendation tonight. And I think that this does strike the right balance for where we are right now, recognizing that there continue to be immediate needs. But there will also be needs five years from now, 10 years from now. And the recommendation that I'm going to propose shortly does address ElderNet, does address Palm, does address New Horizons, a lot of these organizations that do go out and help those who are most in need in our community. So while they may not address it currently, there will be those needs in the future. And this is a real opportunity for us to address those needs as well. So are there any other board responses to public comment? Seeing none, I am going to put a motion on the floor to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of an allocation plan related to American Rescue Plan funding as follows: $8,965,389 towards CIP Project 4508, Ardmore Avenue Community Center and Center for Positive Aging in Lower Merion; $1 million to CIP Project 4489, Ashbridge Memorial Park Master Plan Implementation; $1 million to CIP Number 4404, Fire Apparatus Replacement Fund; $740,000 to East Levering Mill Road Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Improvements, which is CIP 4236 B.C.-3; $636,258, something like that, two, thank you, $636,258 to CIP 4652, Stormwater Facilities Management; and $410,000 as a pandemic bonus to township staff, for a total of $12,751, darn it, $12,751,647. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner McComb. With that, the floor is now open to comments on the motion. Commissioner Zelov.
Thank you, Vice President Gaverman. As has been communicated to all of my colleagues, I would like to make a motion to amend the motion that has just been made. So I move as follows. I move to amend the allocation of Round One of ARP funds to add $140,000 for improvements to the first and second floor of the Bryn Mawr Community Center. This project will provide updated and usable space for ElderNet, enabling ElderNet to better provide services to the Lower Merion community. This project is currently in the capital budget. It is part of the facilities improvements, Project Number 4025, and allocated to be spent in 2022. I would include in the motion a deduction of an equal amount from the almost $9 million from the Ardmore Avenue Community Center/Palm allocation.
Do I see a second for that motion? Commissioner O'Neill, thank you very much. The floor is now open to discussion on that specific amendment.
If I could just to expand very slightly, Vice President Gaverman, this is an item that was added to the capital budget in the 2022 budget process. This is, as stated in the motion, improvements that will primarily, but not exclusively, benefit ElderNet. It will also benefit the groups that use the Bryn Mawr Community Center. There are two meeting rooms that are used regularly, at least in non-COVID times, including use by the Recreation Department for a number of indoor recreation programs, as well as sometimes for some of the summer recreation programs. And so this amount will make significant improvements to a well-used building, and I think we should consider adding it to the ARP allocation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Zelov. Commissioner Courtney.
Thank you, Vice President Gaverman. I'd like to offer an amendment in that I'd like to vote on the two pieces of Commissioner Zelov's motion separately. I think ElderNet and the Bryn Mawr Community Center are an excellent recipient of these funds, but I do not think he is subtracting from the right column. I would like to protect the money for the Ardmore Avenue Community Center and Palm. And I feel there will be future amendments coming up that will make other reductions from which this money could come from. So my amendment at this time is to amend Commissioner Zelov's motion so that it is only about the funding for the Bryn Mawr Community Center.
Hey, do we have a second to...
I have a point of order, Vice President Gaverman, and I don't know if it should be directed to you or Commissioner Zelov. But in terms of our nomenclature here about deducting from certain allocations, my question is, is that a permanent thing, or does that mean that further money could be reallocated, say, to the Palm in the following year with our next tranche of ARP funds? So I'm...
So if I can answer the question, the answer to your second question is yes. It is, or it's not permanent, right? The point of the deduction is to maintain an allocation list that totals the total funds available in Round One. Further adjustments can be made in the course of this amendment process if other amendments are approved by a vote of the committee.
My point of order, I think it's important, though, for all of us to keep in mind, and the residents, that there is going to be further funding because a number of the motions request funding for certain allocated purposes with a deduction from other projects that may be recommended, so that it's a bit of a flexible thing. It's a funding thing rather than a lack of commitment to the project or an understanding as to the cost of the project. So with that point of order, I return the floor back to you.
So with Vice President Gaverman's permission, I'll just respond to that. I think we want to keep in mind that what we are talking about today is the allocation of Round One of funding. And Round Two of funding could augment that funding, but it certainly could not deduct from it, right? And, you know, the other thing to keep in mind, probably more, I mean, everyone on the board knows this, but probably more informed to the public, is that Round Two does not have to operate on our normal budget cycle, right? Round Two would show up in the township midway through the year. And so it may only be a matter of months before we are having a discussion of how to allocate Round Two. Hopefully that answered your question.
It does. And just my last sort of related question is, for example, on the recommendation summary in our briefing book, it has several projects with allocations, like the Kenwood Heritage Trail, Norfolk Southern. Those will go into the CIP, but they're not being included on the amount of money for this tranche of the ARP funds. But it doesn't mean we're not funding them. It's just, it's a question of sort of timing and allocation rather than anything else.
Correct. What's on the agenda tonight is the spending of this $12,751,647, which will go in as a line item to whatever, you know, if any projects are in the CIP, that will go in as a line item under the funding for those projects. And if it goes elsewhere, it would be a specific amount for wherever they end up going. Anything else in the CIP that was in that memorandum has nothing to do with this $12 million. Those were just other ideas that were thought of and thought they made sense to go into the CIP, but they have nothing to do with tonight's motion.
Brilliant. Thank you.
So...
Can I follow up on that point of order?
Sure.
Thank you so much. While Commissioner McComb was looking to the debit side, let me look to the credit side and ask a question. The number 140, how is that derived? Why not 130? Why not 150? Is there some reason, Emei Hyman?
I think the man who made the motion should respond.
Thank you, Vice President Gaverman. It's, Commissioner Bernheim, it is the total amount in the CIP for improvements to this facility in Project 4025 for 2022. It is the full amount that's in the budget. And while I have the floor, if I could simply say that the, excuse me?
It's the full township.
Full township amount, yes. Full amount to be funded by the township, yes. The deduction is not reflective of the great worthiness of the AACC/Palm project. It is simply going to the by-far largest amount. In the capital budget, the funding for the AACC/Palm is in the order of $12 million. So this does not suggest that there would be a reduction in the budget, simply a change in the allocation.
So we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. If I'm tracking this correctly, we have an amendment that was made by Commissioner Zelov to my motion, and then amendment to the amendment that was made by Commissioner Courtney that has not yet been seconded. Is there a second for Commissioner Courtney's amendment to Commissioner Zelov's amendment to my motion? Commissioner Wellin, I see you're seconding it. Now for discussion on the amendment to the amendment, Commissioner Courtney's amendment. Do we have any discussion? Commissioner Churchill.
Thank you. When these amendments are passed or not, I would like a point of information. So thank you.
You're welcome. I will make some comment, not seeing any hands right now. I think, in my mind, it is very important to not only say what we should be adding in, we're talking about a finite amount of money, but where that money would be coming from. If we feel it should come from another piece of this $12 million plus, we can make an amendment. Or if Commissioner Zelov's motion passed to take $140,000 out of AACC/Palm, somebody else can make another motion to take $140,000 out of something else and put it back in. But I think it is very important that with every motion, at least in my mind, that where we allocate money, we also take out that money from somewhere else because we are talking about a finite bucket of money. So I cannot support this amendment. Any other comments? So seeing none, we will now vote on Commissioner Courtney's amendment. Is everyone comfortable with what that is? All those in favor of Commissioner Courtney's amendment, please raise your hand. Five, I believe. All those opposed?
Seven.
Yep.
Eight, five? Or did I miss somebody?
It was nine, five.
Nine, five. All right. Once I get past one hand...
Five, nine, actually. It was five, nine.
Okay. Thank you. So that amendment does not pass. On the floor still is Commissioner Zelov's amendment to add $140,000 for improvements to the Bryn Mawr Community Center. Any comments on that amendment? President Sinai.
Thank you, Vice President Gaverman. So I'm actually not going to support this amendment, sorry, Commissioner Zelov, not because I don't think this is a worthy project. I think it's a completely worthy project. But as we will see through the course of the evening, I'm going to take a relatively consistent line that we've already had a process for Round One, and it was a thorough process. And exceptions to that process should be things that are of imminent need that could not be considered in the bucket of Round Two. And I think if this project is one that three or four months down the road where we are considering the bucket of Round Two, we should weigh it against the other Round Two projects. And I expect, you know, given the support I sense on this board, it would be treated well in Round Two. But we should compare it to all the other things that we should have in Round Two. We should do that process. And so I am not going to support this in Round One.
Great. Thank you, President Sinai. Commissioner Kramer.
I have really a question in this regard. It's my understanding that this project we voted to add into the CIP to be done in 2022. So this would either be funded, if it's not funded with ARP funding, it would be funded by other borrowing or general fund money. And I would like to know if my understanding on this is correct.
Is that a question, I think, for Patrick Mack?
That's correct, Commissioner Kramer. It's in the CIP budget already that's been adopted by the board.
So if that's the case, then there is really no need for us to take money away from the Ardmore Avenue Community Project in order to get this project accomplished, because this one's going to be done anyhow. Is that correct?
Well, I can't speak to the need, but it's correct that this project will be done either with ARP money or it'll be done with CIP money, which is financed generally by borrowed funds. The more we borrow, the more we pay back in taxes.
Well, I would just like to say that I think that this is a very worthy project, and I'm so glad that it's in the CIP, but I can't support this amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? You know, I, oh, actually, I'm going to go, and then I will come back to you for another bite at the apple. I also think this is a worthy project. I think this is very well in line with the other recommended projects for this Round One ARP money. It supports ElderNet in addition to one of our township historic buildings. It, you know, like I said, it supports ElderNet, like the other ones support New Horizons, Palm, and the Ardmore Community specifically. However, I think Commissioner Sinai's comment that unless, you know, unless there, you know, is something that truly is a reason to sway, I'm thinking of the wrong word, to vary from what we currently have here, I don't think I can support it. I think that I would certainly support this in Round Two or, you know, funding it some other way. I think what's important about these projects that are currently in the motion are projects while they are in our CIP plan, they are not in our CIP budget necessarily. They are projects that are in out years and frankly have taken a long time that have been under consideration. Ashbridge, the Ashbridge House, taking care of our Class I historic structure to make it usable and usable specifically for New Horizon Senior Center potentially, is something that's been in the works for over 10 years now. The AACC/Palm has been for even longer than that. Those projects, I truly believe, may not happen if not for this money from the ARP. I think it is crucial to allocate this money, even though they are in the CIP, they're in-out years. And allocating this money, I think, really does bring these projects to a reality. So as much as I want to support this amendment, I think it is important for me to stick with the recommendation, and I am not going to support it. Thank you. Commissioner Zelov, do you...
I need to recover for just a moment.
Well, he's on recovery, and I'm not sure, you know, if this is going to help or hurt
his cause. Because my initial reaction was not to support this for many of the reasons that have been stated. But I recognize here that in the world of reality, the 8.9 million that's already allocated for the AACC/Palm situation, that's not going to be spent immediately. That project's going to take a period of time. To take the 140 out of that, which is almost the proverbial drop in the bucket considering the expenditures, and put that right now to the project on the Bryn Mawr Community Center, you'll get that done now. You won't have a delay. That money will be readily available. It's not a major project. Everybody agrees... Everybody agrees that we can go ahead and do it. Economically, it makes sense then to do that as opposed to utilizing whatever other funds that we're gonna get from some future bond or from some other future project. It's readily available, and this gets done, and that answers President Sinai's question, why deviate from the original plan? Here's why, because this is a construction project that we can do immediately without delay, and it's not gonna adversely impact the Palm project at all. So, much to my surprise, I'll end up supporting this. That was not my initial attention by coming in here, which shows how valuable this process is.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim.
But let's see who else I persuade.
Commissioner Courtney.
Well, did I, I know I lost my turn. I have recovered from the.
I did not know if you had recovered.
I have recovered, yes. I'm pleased that Commissioner Bernheim has been persuaded without me having to lean over and whisper to him. So I just would point out that recognizing this, the benefit to ElderNet that serves our community specifically and broadly, and that this building serves our community very broadly, is why I recommend, that's why I, I've made this motion to add it to ARP. But there's no question, as Commissioner Gilda Kramer pointed out, it's going to move forward one way or the other, which also applies to the Ardmore Avenue Community Center slash Palm improvements. It's going to move forward from multiple funding sources, debt, ARP, and perhaps grants. And it's going to move forward not by constraint of funds, but by constraint of community input and feasibility study and material availability. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Courtney.
Vice President Gavin, thank you. Briefly, I will not support this at the moment. Again, I agree with everyone, this is a very worthy project, and it will get funded, it will get done, but I do not like taking from one community center to give to another when I feel like there are other allocations here that can be reduced. And should this fail right now, I would be happy to move subsequently for a different funding source if Commissioner Zelov doesn't beat me to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Courtney. Commissioner McCone.
Thank you, Vice President Gavin. I, I'm persuaded by Commissioner Bernheim's perspective, which is, this is certainly a worthy project, and the money can make a difference now. And I think as we look at these amendments moving forward, we should distinguish between things that have immediate benefit and those that may be useful but, but don't need to have the money spent right away. For example, the Palm, that's, it's certainly worthy. I don't think you'll find a dissenting vote on that. It's gonna go forward, and I'm thrilled with that, but it's gonna be a long-term project. There's an awful lot in terms of the bid and specs and so forth. I think the, I think the allocation of money for the Bryn Mawr Community Center can make an immediate difference, and I think that is gonna be a rationale that may be useful for us looking down the road at the other amendments. Some have a very short timeframe, and they may, that may be a reason for moving to allocate funds to them right away rather than deferring it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Professor Welling.
Thank you, Vice President.
I would suggest that while all of the comments and sort of parcings here by my fellow commissioners are well-intentioned, we, I, I think we're getting a little misguided. We're, we're aiming for the perfect instead of the, you know, doing the good. We've been talking for weeks and weeks about how do we get money to those who immediately need it, and how do we help those entities and groups that do that already in the direct services? We've heard so much public testimony about this, so much expended emotion about this topic, and here we are talking about $140,000 that can easily be, you know, additionally allocated to the Palm going forward. We heard that from, you know, on my screen, everyone is, you know, one millimeter tall, so I'm not sure who was saying that, but I think that I would very strongly support this. I think actually this doesn't go far enough, and I, I think we should have gone ahead and tried to allocate funds to do the third floor as well to help ElderNet, help our constituents and help our citizens. They are doing phenomenal work on the ground right now, and I think we should be doing everything to help them. And, you know, we can parse 100 times in this room, so to speak, I'm on Zoom, you know, how exactly it should be allocated and where exactly it should go, but I, I think the board here is missing the point that this should happen immediately. This is an immediate allocation of money that can help people directly and in a very real way. And I think while I agree with Commissioner Courtney that I would have liked all of the money to stay with the Palm, and I certainly, you know, will work with everyone to fully fund every penny that the Palm needs going forward, I agree with Commissioner Bernheim that at this point in time, the Palm does not actually need that full, you know, multi-millions of dollars. It can do without 140,000 and be reallocated the 140 at another time when no one is being directly impacted and no services are being lost. So I fully support this. I think it shouldn't, it should have gone farther for the third floor also to even further help ElderNet, and I hope people will change their mind.
Thank you, Commissioner Welling. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will call Commissioner Zelov's amendment for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, I believe. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Two, three, four, five. Thank you, Commissioner Stevenson, for the late vote. It looks like it passes nine to five. Is that correct? Yes? I will assume it's correct. All right. So we're back to the initial motion. Any other comments? Commissioner McKean.
Thank you, Vice President Gavin. I would like to amend the motion to remove the funding for the Fire Apparatus Replacement Fund. It's 4404, $1 million. So let me just say from the outset, I believe when I first saw this, it was a solid proposal. I think the Finance Committee is absolutely in the right place trying to help out the, the fire service. But we have one really substantial change since this recommendation was made, and that is Fire Chief Chaz McGarvey, McGarvey submitted that he will be leaving Lower Merion later this year. We will have a new fire chief likely sometime this summer. And in my mind, that changed the use of these funds dramatically. I think we all wanna find ways to support the fire service, and I'll tell you, I'm absolutely committed to using 1 million, $2 million to, to support the fire service, but that would be allocation number two. What I think we need to do is remove this funding and then see what the new fire chief, what he or she wants to do, what they think is the best way to support the fire service with ARP funds. And this could include a discussion with the good people in Arbut Ambulance, other first responders, but I think the key is really to find, to, to work with the first responders to see what's actually the, the best way to do it. And we really need to get the new fire chief in here before we commit to, to spending that money. And I do not believe this prejudice is the fire service in any way. I mean, these are brave first responders. I think the entire budget is about $3.8 million for, for the fire service. We had two fatal incidents in the line of duty this summer, so I take the, the fire, the brave fire service very seriously, and I would not wanna strip them of money, but these projects for these trucks, they're budgeted in CIP Project 4404. I, I look from 2021 to 2026, we'll even get a $1.65 million contribution from Radnor. So at the end of the day, the township owns these trucks, not the fire service. And, and that's why I believe that if we really wanna find the best way to work with the fire service, we kick this to round two, and at that point, we have a new fire chief on board, and he or she can hopefully tell us what the fire service truly needs, you know, and find the best way to spend it. And then, then in the interim, this frees up a million dollars. I know we've heard a lot of people talk about immediate needs of the community. This million dollars doesn't need to get spent, but here's a million, up to a million dollars to look at to address the immediate needs of the community. And then I think it's very important that we come back and we do the fire service right, and we spend 1 million or 2 million dollars in round two with the way that the fire service wants to see it spent. And I'll, I'll just close by saying again, I, I, this was a strong recommendation by the fire, excuse me, by the Finance Committee, but I believe that when, when Fire Chief McGarvey indicated that he's moving on, that's a game changer, and we have to see what the new director wants to do with, with the funding.
Thank you. Commissioner McKean, is there a second to Commissioner McKean's motion? Commissioner Courtney, thank you. Do we have any discussion on this motion? Commissioner Churchill.
I'm just reminded, once we vote on this, I still have a point of information.
Thank you. Do you want, Commissioner Churchill, I will ask a question. Is your point of information you want after each vote? What would, what would be helpful to you?
Well, the first is, are we going to vote on this as a package or separate items?
So there is, there's a motion on the floor to vote on this as a package, and then amendments have come up and will continue to come up on adjusting this motion as a, as a package.
Well, I would, I, that would have an amendment at a future time to vote separately on these items. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. President Sinai.
Yeah, I just have a quick question for Manager McNeely, because Commissioner McKean has, has proposed removing a line item without, without allocating it. If we do not allocate all this money this evening, what happens to the money that's not allocated?
Commissioner, we'll just wait until you made decisions on the second half allocation.
Okay. Could it be done, you, between now and the second half we chose to?
You're, you're free to allocate this money at any point in time you choose.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bernheim. Commissioner Bern, uh, Commissioner Bernheim.
Fair enough. Thank you ver, thank you very much. And let me address the, the points made by Commissioner McKean, and I, I recognize everything's, you know, with, with good intentions, but some additional information may be of assistance. And while we will be replacing our, our Chief Fire Marshal, Chaz McGarvey, that has absolutely nothing to do with, with this allocation. This allocation for the fire apparatus is something that comes from a policy which we have set. This is a policy that's worked on with each of the presidents of each of the fire companies and the chiefs of the fire companies, the manager and myself as well, and, and Chief McGarvey, over a period of time. In order to reach this determination, we had separate meetings with each of the fire companies as to what their specific needs for their fire apparatus is. This wasn't the first time this was done. This has been done several times over the years, such that we put into place a plan as to when we were going to replace certain apparatus which has a shelf life. And in the course of doing that, we did something novel. It used to be that the township would fund the apparatus, but it was owned by the fire companies. We changed that. We now do own that. But that's really immaterial to the fact that we, this program that is set out there for the replacement of the apparatus is something that has been effectuated and approved by each of the fire companies. Please keep in mind, it is not like when you decide to go get a car, and you're just gonna go to the agency and, and get that car, and you may say, well, you know, I want this feature or, or that feature, and your car is there. The most recent fire truck was for Penwin, am I correct? And the ordering of, of that took considerable period of time in order to get it retrofitted with the various different items that were necessary for that particular unit, that particular type of truck, and everything else took much, much longer than, than was originally planned, and there's always a, a cost factor to that. So we're going to stay consistent with the fire apparatus plan, even with a new chief that's put into place. That's not going to change. So the question then becomes, though, how are we going to fund this apparatus, which while it's listed at a million dollars, please do not be surprised when it costs more than that and that we have to fund it. That just seems to be the nature of, of where they go. So I, I would wholeheartedly suggest that since it is an, an significant expense that we can utilize the ARP funds in order to be able to do this, it relieves a large burden from us. The contribution that we get from Radnor is because they join with the Bryn Mawr Fire Service, and the two of them work together. And so it's an allocation of price for those operating costs, not for the apparatus. So while I think it's, you know, certainly understandable why the request is made, the predicate doesn't follow the, the ultimate, the ultimate ask that, that is here. So this is something that I would encourage folks not to go ahead and support, because albeit not by design, it undermines the apparatus policy which is in place, which isn't about to change.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. Any other comments on Commissioner McKean's motion? Commissioner Kramer.
I support this motion because the, we're going to get that fire apparatus one way or another. And there isn't, unlike the situation with, with the ElderNet building with the Bryn Mawr Community Center, there isn't a pressing need to do something immediately because of an asbestos problem. This fire apparatus is going to be purchased this year. I've been assured by, by Management McNeely whether or not we use ARP funds for it. So I view there, that there are many more important pressing community need, immediate needs of residents, that I would like to see this million dollars dedicated to support, since we're going to be, we've planned for this expense, we've budgeted for it, it's been in the CIP, we're gonna do it no matter what, and this money could be much better used for the immediate needs of our residents.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Commissioner Courtney.
Thank you, Vice President Gavin. I, I agree with what Commissioner Kramer has just stated in terms of the fire apparatus, that this is in our CIP. We've talked about already this evening how many different options we have for funding the CIP, and I have no doubt that we can find a million dollars for fire apparatus or however, I believe it's something about $2 million that's been allocated in our CIP for fire, for fire apparatus. And, and I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Bernheim in, in his statements about whether the new fire chief should have any say in this. I think when we hire a new member of staff, we should do what we can to support that member coming in and being an effective leader of the entirety of the township's fire services, and part of that will be having a say in how money is spent on the fire services. And then lastly, it is our job to protect the health, safety, and welfare of this township. And when it comes to fire services, I know that we will, we will never neglect that job, regardless of the cost of the apparatus, we will find a way to fund it. However, as Commissioner Kramer noted, there are pressing needs in terms of health, safety, and welfare for a number of our residents that ARP money in part is meant to fund, and that these current allocations do not. They do not go directly to the immediate pressing need of health, safety, and welfare of those members of our community who have been most, most negatively impacted by the COVID pandemic, and, and we have all seen Commissioner Kramer's proposed amendments that would use this money to do so, and I would like to go ahead and reduce this allocation now so that we can debate Commissioner Kramer's proposals for how we can protect our, our residents who have been negatively impacted. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Courtney. I, I'd like to make a comment on this. I cannot support this amendment. As Commissioner Courtney just said, health, safety, welfare of our community is, is our number one charge as commissioners, and our fire service is at the forefront of that. The other thing I keep hearing is this is going to get done regardless. The standard for ARP money is not to, is not to do projects that will not get done other than the ARP money. That is, you know, the number one thing, as, as had been said earlier, is one of the main goals of the ARP is to make townships whole. This township, while, as I said before, did relatively well during the pandemic, was still affected. And being able to impact our CIP and help out with projects that are already on the agenda is certainly one of the goals of this project and something that, of this money, and something that is still very important. And I believe that supporting our, our fire apparatus does meet the immediate needs of the health, safety, and welfare, and therefore I, I cannot support this amendment as much as I respect the, the rationale behind it. Any other comments? Yes? Go ahead. Yes, Commissioner Zella?
This allocation is consistent with the allowed uses of ARP funds with some criteria that Commissioner Macombe very eloquently stated a moment ago. This is a funding that would be needed in 2022, so it is a shorter timeframe. I think it does prejudice the fire service. And I think that it's, well, I know that it's this board that sets the apparatus policy, not the chief fire officer, whoever that person is. And I suspect that the new chief fire officer will be delighted with our apparatus policy because it is not only unusual throughout the suburban communities, I suspect it's unique. And I think that we should be allocating ARP funds in support of that policy.
Thank you, Commissioner Zella. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Grimes?
Yeah, thank you. So I've been listening to this discussion and was hesitant to say anything, but I'm going to make a comment now that will probably apply to some of the later discussion, too. I am in, look, I think a lot of what I expect we're going to hear in proposals coming up are, have a lot of merit. I think that what Commissioner Zella proposed has merit. The challenge here, as others said, is finding the money. And I am reluctant, as much as I respect the suggestion to take money from the fire fund, without sort of a well-thought-out assessment. We've heard people say, "We need the money, we don't need the money now." Frankly, you know, we've discussed this several times over months now, if not weeks. And what I heard during our public comment last year is there's another, there's another group that's getting money under the ARP allocation that said, "Please take money from us and you, from our fund and use it for immediate needs." And I don't want to out them at this point, but the point is, is that I would feel more comfortable knowing that after reasoned thought, it's okay to take some of this money from the, from like the fire fund rather than making a decision tonight. So whereas I'm certainly in support of a lot of the uses for this funds, I'm not prepared to agree to take it from the fire fund at this time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will call Commissioner McKeon's amendment to remove $1 million from the Fire Apparatus Replacement Fund. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, if I'm counting correctly. All those opposed? Two, three, four, five, six. So that passes eight to six. Great, thank you very much. Any other comments or amendments? Commissioner Kramer?
As you know, I have a series of specific amendments and then an overriding amendment to devote up to $1 million to immediate needs of residents. Over the last two years, and I'd like to just preface this by giving some explanation and then breaking it out to deal with the specific issues first, and then the remainder to be set aside for these purposes as the last motion. So I'd like to kind of set the stage for this a little bit, if you don't mind. Over the last two years, I have worked as chair of the Health Committee with a number of organizations in our community that have been providing services and in conjunction with other commissioners, have identified many of the needs of our community, particularly the people who are most affected by the pandemic. And those needs keep changing. Some, what needs were two years ago are perhaps a little different from what they are now. And we need to be able to respond as needs arise and address them as quickly as possible. So the needs that I've ident, we've identified are in the proposed motion that you have seen. The first one is for high-quality masks to protect people that are urgently needed right now, to protect people who cannot afford N95 or KN95 masks. This is something that our Health Advisory Council has strongly recommended, and we've prepared a proposal on. The second need that we've seen, and one that we saw right from the beginning, was food. We have now 12.83% of our public school students on subsidized meal plans. That equates to about 1,100 students. And we also have somewhere between probably 1,200 and 1,500, perhaps more, residents who are being served by our food pantries and neighbors, helping neighbors. Our restaurant meals for food banks program was purchasing 350 or so meals every week for people who were food insecure. At its height, right now, we're purchasing 240, 250 a week. And these are 240 or 250 people who each week are benefiting from this program. We've identified the need for shelter, and we've devoted a lot of our COVID CDBG money to helping people with mortgage and rental issues. I know that we are in the process of transferring over some additional money, but there's a concern that we may run out, especially as the child, childcare credit or child tax credit disappears, and people who have been relying on that to help with some of their expenses are no longer going to have that money. So the needs for rent and mortgage relief may increase and may increase to exceed what we have right now available in COVID CDBG funding. Another basic need that we've identified is toiletries, cleaning supplies, paper goods, toilet paper, that many of the residents in our community are finding it difficult. Diapers, difficult to purchase because they don't have the money for it. And then the other category is basically that we've identified is assistance to nonprofits. And there are a number of nonprofits that have asked for us to provide them with help so that they can help the most vulnerable residents in our community. The, so I would like to start with making individual motions for specific items that we'd like to see funded out of the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And the first one, I would like to move that we allocate up to $62,500 for the provision of N95 or KN95 masks to the community, focusing on lower-income residents and recipients of CDBG COVID-19 assistance.
I do have a second for Commissioner Kramer's motions. Commissioner Macombe, thank you. President Sinai?
Okay, so thank you, Vice President Gavran. So I, just a brief aside, if I may. I am looking at the clock, which is reading 9:40. We have several amendments to get through, and we have another, several agenda items on this, some of which have people waiting in the audience to speak on. I would encourage my colleagues, everyone deserves to be heard on these. I would encourage my colleagues to do what they can to keep it brief. I think we've probably stated our philosophical positions on each of these things pretty much already. And we could just go through these relatively, with some alacrity, each of these proposed items that would hopefully make us get through this relatively quickly. So I guess I'll go first on this. I think this is a terrific idea. Like, most terrific but unproven ideas, I tend to err on the start small. That would be, you know, compatible certainly with our budget authority to go and bid these things out, which does not allow us to do 62,500. And I would encourage us to instead just do this on the, in partnership with the school district, which is, I think, is a well-established distributional channel for getting these masks to people in need. And I think Commissioner Kramer was very thoughtful to think of that channel. And I think the school district, as my understanding, is eager to help, and that would be a good way to do it. So I would, I would propose an amendment to amend this to, what is it, 11,000? Would be good, bid, approximately?
That would be three quotes. Anything above 11 would be three quotes.
Okay, so $11,000, which would be 33,000 masks. And for the 800 families in the school districts, 1,100 kids, 800 families, that is more than sufficient number of masks to distribute to needy population.
May I, may I say that if that number were to be 21.5?
Commissioner, can we see if there's a second to President Sinai's motion? Commissioner Grimes, comment on this? Commissioner Kramer?
I was just going to say that if the number were to be 21.5, I would accept that as a friendly amendment because I have been crunching numbers, and that would be enough immediately to get a two-week supply of masks out to people that, as needed, and it could still be done very quickly by getting three quotes. And if we needed more down the road, if the federal government's program is not adequate, we could come back and seek additional funding.
Thank you. As a point of order, the amendment is for 11,000, not 21.5. And unless President Sinai wants to change his amendment, that's where we are. Any other comments on President Sinai's amendment to Commissioner Kramer's amendment? Commissioner Zella?
Thank you, Vice President Gavran. I would note that today, the president indicated he is going to allocate not 65,000, not 11,000, but 400 million for masks to be distributed for free nationwide. The Lorimer School District?
400 million masks.
400 million masks.
I stand corrected. 400 million masks for a country with a population of less than that. And the school district did receive ARP funds from the same source that the township did. And so I do not support this.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments?
Can I just get a little clarification?
Sure.
So 11, the idea of 11,500 is that we can, we can make a purchase expeditiously with that number? If we were to go over that, that's the maximum that we can do without having to get?
That's a number we can purchase without going through three quotes or going through a competitive bid process.
And the number's 11,000 or 11,500?
It's, it's, with your motion.
The motion was 11,000, which is under. The motion was for 11,000.
11 and changes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will call President Sinai's amendment for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All those opposed? Two, three, four. I believe that passes. Count everybody?
I missed, I think, a few of the names.
Okay, let's try, all those in favor again, please raise your hand.
Okay.
All those opposed? All right?
Okay.
We're good?
Passes from nine to five.
That passes, that amendment? So we don't now vote on the, so now we're voting on the underlying, or discussion on the underlying motion of spending $11,000 on masks, if I'm correct? Am I missing, am I messing this up?
That's right.
That is correct. So $11,000 on masks, any discussion on that? President Bernheim?
Yeah, very briefly, look, and once again, good intentions and everything else in order to go ahead and do this, there's no doubt about that. $11,000, I don't know how many masks that's going to get, how we're going to go ahead and distribute them, what we're going to do that's in the process that, you know, with the national plan that's going out, you can theoretically, I say theoretically, order online. We know how some national online programs have worked in the past. If we go ahead and do this, but talk about the proverbial drop in a bucket. I don't know, you know, that we're really going to make an impact in doing this. Again, noble, great idea, masking is important, look at us all, we're wearing them here. And we're told the N95s or KN95s is what we really want. But I think that this is a difficult thing for the township to do. It's not going to be that much value added, certainly at $11,500. I don't know how many masks that buys. I would suggest we could use the funds for something else that may be more impactful.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. Just again, 11,000, not 11,500. I want to make sure we got that record straight.
I think President Sinai said that was 33,000 masks, approximately?
Approximately. Is that right?
Well, an order we placed weeks ago, we bought 600 for around 33 cents apiece. Checking prices recently, they've risen, so it depends on when we order and, you know, what the pricing is at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Commissioner Kramer?
I just wanted to make it clear that I have spoken with each of the food banks, with ElderNet, Mitsa Food Pantry, Narburg Community Food Bank, Ardmore Food Bank, and also with Neighbors Helping Neighbors, and with the school district. And all of them are waiting for masks to distribute in this way and are eager to have them, and view this as an important undertaking for us. And this is very strongly recommended last night by our Health Advisory Council as a way of mitigating this current surge of.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Commissioner Courtney?
Thank you, Vice President Gavran. I just have a question for our township manager. If we pass this tonight, how quickly could those masks be available for distribution?
I really can't tell you that. We can make the order practically immediately, but it all depends upon shipping and when they will arrive. I think our last order arrived, and Laurie, shake your head if I'm right, in a matter of a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Okay, any comments?
I'm catching up on the news, quickly reading. It sounds like this, this program of the federal government is set to be, do distribution through pharmacies sometime in February, but potentially as early as next week. I feel like it doesn't hurt us to follow through with this, to get it to our most needy residents at the places where they are likely to be.
Great, thank you. I have a question for our township manager. If we pass this, we order the masks, we get them, then what? What is, how do we distribute these?
Well, the board had said, Commissioner Sinai mentioned distributing through the school district. That'd be one method.
Great, yeah, President Sinai?
Yeah, sorry, so I should have been clearer in my motion that my intent was to get the masks to distribute through the school district because in discussions with the president of the Lorimer School Board, she told me that they have the infrastructure to distribute through, to the families who are on free and reduced lunch. And so it is a audience that would not necessarily be able to afford high-quality masks of their own. The medical guidance that we are getting in the news and from our Health Advisory Councils, that upgrading the quality of your mask is important. And there is a concern that some people cannot afford to do that, and that this has a definite public health impact, and is a good way for us to, you know, partner within the township through an existing distribution channel, get things done.
Thank you, President Sinai. I'll make a comment. I am a little, I think that makes a lot of sense. If we're going to do this, I think that's the way to do it. We, it's identified, it is a great partnership between the township and the school district. I am concerned, Commissioner Kramer, with what I heard, that these various organizations are excited and ready for this distribution, that having, if I'm hearing correctly or interpreting it correctly, having gone out to them and said, "Hey, this is coming," you know, this, a little bit putting the cart before the horse before having brought it up to the board and made a call between the 14 people on this board. I hope I'm misinterpreting that, and it is.
You are, you are making.
Okay.
I asked if we got the funding, would they be able to distribute?
Okay, thank you. I'm glad to hear that I'm misinterpreting it. I think Commissioner Sinai's plan of going through the school district would be the right way to go here. Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you. I just have a question, I think, for Commissioner Kramer, Gilda Kramer. And that is with respect to the distribution to the nonprofit. to the distribution to the nonprofits. Did I hear you correctly that they're waiting on their masks, which is why this would be needed as sort of a gap measure?
No, what they, what they've told me is that this would be very beneficial to their, to their clients, if you will. So for example, ElderNet would love to have the high-quality masks to distribute to the low-income elderly people who patronize them, and the same thing with each of the other food banks. They've all said the same thing.
Thank you very much.
And then in addition to the school district, these would be, you know, parallel, somewhat overlapping, but basically parallel methods of distribution, and to some extent reaching different communities. So for example, the ElderNet community would not be reached through the school district.
So the, the motion on the floor right now is to spend eleven thousand dollars on KN-95 masks to be distributed through the school district as Professor, as Professor and President Sinai's amendment which, which carries, so that's where we are right now. We will take a vote on that. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. All right? We missing people or we good?
No, I think we're good.
We're good. All right.
Commissioner Whalen, that was a, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Whalen, just to confirm, that was a yes vote?
He's just going to get, he's just going to.
Great, thank you. All right, that motion carries. I know, Commissioner Kramer, you had other, other motions. You ready for your next one?
The second one is to set aside up to two hundred thousand dollars, not necessarily to use the full two hundred thousand, but to set it aside for rental mortgage and utility assistance to needy residents.
There a second? Commissioner Stevenson, thank you. Comment on this motion? President Sinai?
Okay, so I will, I will, I'm going to say, this, this is going to apply to, to a lot of these, because I'm going to say at once, which is, I think is important, if we are going to be allocating money, that it be for specific, actionable, implementable purposes, and things that are simply good ideas. Well, I, I appreciate Commissioner McKeon's, having, you know, pulled money out in advance, we should, we should revisit these when it actually has specific things that we can implement, as opposed to just a notion at that point, even if it's a good notion. So I'm not going to support these things unless we, we actually have a mechanism and a budget in dollars where, you know, in, in elements where they're going to, because at the end of the day, we are government allocating money.
Thank you, President Sinai. Commissioner McKeon?
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. I, I agree with President Sinai on this. I mean, the hour is late, we still have building and planning, and there's also a Board of Commissioners meeting after that, and a lot of these amendments, I think, are very well intended, but they may be better if they're fleshed out more at an upcoming Finance Committee meeting, perhaps on, on February 2nd. So I will have probably difficulty supporting most of these, and it may be better, in fact, even just table them to February 2nd, or revisit them on February 2nd or some other meeting in, in February.
Okay. Any other comments?
If that's a motion to table, why second it?
Was that, was that a motion to?
Yes, I'll make a motion to table the rest of.
I don't, well, there's only been one, yeah.
I think the motion was for the remainder that's on the list that was submitted to us, is that correct, Commissioner McKeon?
But I, having not made those motions, I don't believe.
Well, I withdraw my, if it was a motion or not, whatever I rambled about, I withdraw it.
Any other? Commissioner Kramer?
Yes. In light of the request to table this particular one, you know, I think that we have an existing structure in, in place right now, and that we have through the CDBG program, and there's no reason that we couldn't use that same structure as a way of administering this. It would just provide a little extra money when we run out of the COVID, the COVID, the COVID funds, basically. And so that was the, that was the reason and the way in which I thought this could be done. However, if it is the sense of the group that you'd prefer to have this tabled and, and brought back up by the beginning of February, I'm happy to withdraw.
Okay. If you are withdrawing the motion, the motion is withdrawn. Does anyone, including Commissioner Kramer, have any other motions?
Yes, I do. I will also defer until the beginning of February the Restaurant Rescue Program that we are in, in the process of developing. We're fine-tuning it and having a meeting on it tomorrow, and I think it might be more ripe in a couple of weeks. However, I do believe that the Palm's request for funding, which is time-sensitive because it would enable them to conduct activities during this winter time period, ought to be considered, and I move that we allocate one hundred and six thousand seven hundred seventy as requested by Palm in its AARP funding suggestion.
Is there a second? Commissioner Courtney, thank you. Any comments to this motion? President Sinai?
So, so I, I think this Palm funding has, has some merit, but it's, it is a mix between things that are immediate pressing needs, be able to serve seniors outdoors, and other needs that are not. And I would encourage Commissioner Kramer to come back if she wants my support at another time, where she has excised the things that are, that are added into this in leaving the things like outdoor heaters in tents, and, you know, the repairs, the entrance onings that are needed to be able to conduct outdoor programming in, in the time of COVID. That, that actually does meet the AARP guidelines.
Commissioner Zelov?
Thanks, Vice President Gavron. If, if you look at the detail of, of what's been moved, includes up to forty-five thousand dollars for a van. Lower Marion Township has a relatively new van that is currently used by Palm. We supply the driver. This seems very duplicative and is hard to understand. The other observation I'd make is that the Palm is a building in need of some repair. There is a feasibility study underway with community input and ex, and expect, and an expectation that included in the capital budget line item, which will be largely funded by AARP funds if we proceed with the base motion. Making repairs to a building now that is going to have a much broader repair and improvement plan presented to us in a study and input that's underway seems unnecessary. I don't think we should support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Zelov. Any other comments? Commissioner Churchill?
Thank you. I, I just make the comment that when it comes to the Palm and the community center, that we don't even have the report and the recommendations on what, when, and how. And I feel, I understand that you want to allocate money, and I'm happy about eight million dollars, but I can't remember a time in which we have allocated money without some kind of recommendations and some kind of structure. And that's why I'm very uncomfortable about approving any monies this way, because this just isn't the policy that we have adopted. So, yes, it needs to be done, and I would just remind everyone that for many years, I was the lone wolf during our budget time, reminding people that we needed to address these needs, but there's a right way and a wrong way, and I think we're going about it the wrong way. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Churchill. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we will now call a vote on Commissioner Kramer's amendment of one hundred and six thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars to Palm as requested in its AARP funding suggestion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed? We're seeing, what do you, I see eight, five? Nine, five?
You're opposed, okay.
Okay, nine, five, thank you very much. So that motion, or that amendment fails. Any other amendments? Commissioner Kramer?
The only other one that I have is on behalf of the Lower Marion Affordable Housing Corporation, and I apologize for the ruckus here. And I move that we allow the Lower Marion Affordable Housing Corporation thirteen thousand three hundred eighty dollars as requested in its AARP funding suggestion to cover deep cleaning and lost rentals due to the pandemic.
There a second? Thank you, Courtney. O'Neill, and I will remind your dog that it does not have a vote. Are there any comments on this amendment? Commissioner Churchill?
Where will this money be spent?
So, Commissioner Kramer, do you want to answer that question?
I will attempt to do so here. Hey. I will attempt to do so. The, the, this is basically a, a, under the aid to nonprofit category and to cover losses that they suffered. So this would be to replace pandemic losses of this very important nonprofit in our community.
Very much. Commissioner Churchill, any other comments or questions? Sorry, Commissioner Churchill, are you set? Any other comments or questions?
I'm fine.
Okay. Commissioner Kramer?
In speaking with, with Lower Marion Affordable Housing about this proposal, which had been made previously, I, I learned that over the course of the pandemic, almost all of the residents of St. Esoph, where there are six affordable housing units, had to be making rent at one time or another due to pandemic, pandemic-related reasons, including illness or inability to work because of lockdowns. And as, yeah, that, that's why, because of, of lost rental ability to pay rent, so I think it is inappropriate.
Great, thank you very much, and I hope, and I think that's an important comment, thank you, Commissioner Kramer, I hope that those residents have and continue to take advantage of the township's program of rental assistance, because we do have funds from the CARES Act, and if they haven't already, I hope that they, they do take advantage of that. While I think this is very worthy, and I understand the, the lost income, my concern is a lot of organizations have lost income due to COVID, and a lot of worthy ones, and I, I don't, I, I struggle with why are we focused on, on this organization above other organizations, because I, I fear that this could potentially open the floodgates, because there are a ton of worthy organizations and, and a lot who have, had lost income during, during COVID, not to, not to diminish the, the loss here. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will call this for a vote. All those in favor of this amendment, please raise your hand. We're seeing eight, five again?
Yep.
Okay, all those, what, you got nine?
Nine to five.
Nine, five, wonderful. I'm missing somebody's hand this whole time. Any other amendments? Commissioner Kramer, I think you said that was your last amendment, is that correct?
Yes, I will table the remaining until our next meeting in February.
Okay, technically, we're not tabling anything, they're just withdrawn and they will be submitted.
I will defer presenting.
Perfect, great, thank you. Any other amendments? Commissioner Courtney?
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. By my count, we have added one hundred and fifty, one hundred, one hundred and sixty-three and removed a million. I'd like to replace the one hundred and forty thousand removed from the Ardmore Avenue Community Center allocation that was put into the Rymark Community Center, so just make the, I move that we make the Ardmore Avenue Community Center and Palm allocation back to eight million nine hundred sixty-five thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Great. Second? Second, Commissioner McKeon? Any comments or questions on this amendment? Commissioner Zelov? Commissioner Zelov?
An excellent idea.
Great. Commissioner Churchill?
I was just going to say, it's point of order, we've already voted on this.
This is a new amendment to add one hundred and forty thousand dollars to AACC slash, if I'm correct, Commissioner Courtney?
That is correct.
We voted to remove one hundred and forty thousand from it previously, we now have a motion to put one hundred and forty thousand back into it.
The previous motion was to transfer money from one project to another. This is now to add money to a project.
Yes. All right, any other comments or questions?
If, if, I would be very, very brief. The only, I don't object to the idea at all, and given where, where we are this evening, it makes a lot of sense, but let, let me explain the reason why I will not support it, because each of these is predicated upon the decision to remove the million dollars which was allocated for the fire apparatus replacement, which with all due respect, I believe to be an error. One of the reasons I believe to be an error is the oversight here that, if I may, Commissioner Courtney, it's not that the new fire chief won't have an opportunity to deal with, with funding, but this board approved on July 20th, 2011, June 17, 2015, May 18, 2016, and in October 2018, we approve, the board does, the apparatus policy. We can't change that policy just unilaterally, or where there's going to be a, a new fire chief in there. And I guarantee you, I absolutely guarantee you, that if the new fire chief came in and did that, the very first thing that would happen with him and an apparatus is he would be run over by one of them, that, so, and that would not be something that he would want and, and, or support. And also, without being facetious at all, I know that the members of our fire department, be it from the top all the way, you know, with, and I don't mean to the bottom because of importance, but also to all the volunteers, they watch what we do very closely. I want to make sure that they understand that when I stated we are not changing this policy, we are not changing this policy, and that this fire apparatus indeed will be funded, my personal view, it should come out of AARP. My colleagues seem to disagree with that, and it is only for some of them, thank you, it is only for that reason that I will not support this motion, because it's coming out of that trough. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. I will, I will make a comment. I, I absolutely agree with the, the fact that we will continue with our fire apparatus policy, we will continue with our CIP allocation, it's the question of how it's getting funded. It will still get funded, I also believe that it should have been funded through the AARP, but that vote did not pass. I think that the money allocated to AACC slash Palm is vitally important. I believe that project would not have happened and, and may not happen for years and years unless we do actually allocate enough money from AARP to help support that, so I will support this one hundred and forty thousand going back into AACC Palm, and I do not believe that it means that anything will change with the fire apparatus policy. It will still be funded, just not for AARP money. Any other, Commissioner McKeon?
I'm just trying to head off getting fifteen emails tomorrow about what people think I said. I'm not advocating changing the fire apparatus policy. My, my point was, what, what does the fire service think that is the best way to have money spent on them? I mean, I saw stories with these horrible apartment fires, one in New York, some of the firefighters apparently didn't even have oxygen, they're running in the building without oxygen tanks, they can't get it. I know there was revenue loss at some of the fire stations, maybe they would like, like to have that replaced. I'm not a firefighter, I don't know exactly what they need, but I'm, I'm not advocating changing the policy, I just think that we should have a conversation with them and Norbert Ambulance to see what is the best way to spend this money, and also loop in the new fire marshal, fire chief.
Thank you, Commissioner McKeon. I believe the horse has been officially beaten. Unless there are any other comments, we will call Commissioner Courtney's amendment for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed?
I feel like at home, how voted is whatever you want.
All right, and I believe that amendment slightly passes. With that said, unless there are any other amendments, seeing none, we still have to vote on the underlying motion.
Point of information.
Please inform us. Commissioner Churchill?
Yes, regarding East Levering Mill, I- Yes, regarding East Levering Mill, I have a concern about this because I look upon this as not a one-time project. We have an ad hoc sidewalk committee that I think should be involved in this because where two thousand and twenty-two, hundred and seventy thousand dollars may be okay, but we have not decided on who pays for the sidewalks.
Commissioner, Commissioner Churchill, if I can interrupt, I don't believe that's a point of information, I don't know what that actually is, but I believe it's actually, if you want to make an amendment to remove that seven hundred and forty thousand dollars from, from this motion, you are, you are welcome to do that.
Pardon, my question, does that seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, does that pay for the total cost of the sidewalks? Or does that include the neighbors, or for us to ordain sidewalks to be paid for by the neighbors? Or is this something that we need to talk about in two thousand and twenty-two?
So Commissioner Churchill, I believe, looking at the CIP, that is for the, the balance of the second phase of this project, which, right, in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, or seven hundred and forty thousand dollars was allocated to this project, and this, this would pay for those, for those expenses.
Point of information, does the township still retain its right to ordain sidewalks at the owner's expense? I would think that that's implied because that is policy.
Manager McNeely?
Nothing with respect to this allocation or the CIP allocation affects your ability to ordain sidewalks and require property owners to put them in, so two separate issues.
Okay. And I hope that'll be resolved with our ad hoc sidewalk committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Churchill, any other, so we're now on the underlying motion as amended tonight. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we will call for a vote, the underlying motion on ARP allocation of funds. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Seeing one, I believe.
Yep.
Can we put this on the consent calendar, Commissioner Churchill?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you so much. A long belated end to this meeting, President Sinai, thank you very much to everybody for your participation in this meeting.
So, so that takes us through the first item on tonight's agenda, and we are now onto the second item, which is our building and planning. One item for consideration, which is a tentative sketch plan for fifteen forty-three Monk Road and fourteen twenty Rose Glen Road, Gladwin, in Ward Two, and my apologies and gratitude for the patience of those of you who have been waiting to have this item heard, but the, the ARP funding was also an important item on today's agenda. So with that, we are going to turn it over to our Director of Building and Planning, Chris Lott.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinai. Last Wednesday, after hours of discussion, the board recommended that this item be postponed to this evening so staff could re, could further review some late arriving information from the applicant. This application has been going back and forth for a number of months, it was originally tabled back in November, and there have been ongoing, very productive discussions between the applicant, the ward commissioner, and staff to resolve some of these, these issues. It's not unusual for applications like this to take this long. This is, simply put, the largest single-family house in the township. As, as it came down, there was a lot of timing issues. Last week, information was presented to the board at the meeting, the board didn't have a, a chance, and staff didn't have a chance to fully digest all of that. Since that time, staff has reissued a revised set of recommendations, they've been emailed to the board. These recommendations agree with the conditions of approval that were presented by the applicant last week, with one exception. Condition fourteen has been slightly modified by the township's, at the advice of the township solicitor, for clarity. Some commas have been added and a word struck. That change is acceptable to the applicant. So staff is, is making a recommendation with revised conditions and, and the exhibit that was presented by the applicant last week that was referred to as a compromise exhibit. There was a question of a restricted area, and I want to be able to, hopefully, with my laptop, be able to call up what I wanted to talk about. So, just to remind the board, what we're talking about is a five-lot subdivision. This is a, close to a seventy-acre property that is being subdivided into five lots. The green area that you see will all be permanently protected open spaces required by the township's open space preservation district. This lot, it was developed conventionally, if somebody just came in and, and, and was to develop it, could develop up to fourteen lots. This applicant is only developing five lots. And there's a lot to really like about this, and I wanted to, to just remind this to the board as, as we go forward with the staff recommendation. There was a lot of questions last week about protection, protection to the community, protection to the township, and I just wanted to point out what is coming out of this current proposal and these conditions of approval that have been recommended by staff. Out of this approval, thirty-nine acres of open space will be permanently protected through this, through the open space preservation district. That is required to be preserved by covenant. Also, there are future zoning subdivision, natural features code, protect future development. It allows, it provides the township with the ability to regulate the location of new development on the site if it was to occur based on its relationship to the natural and historic resources on it. Its property is also designated as a, as a historic resource, which has its own level of protection and reviewed by the historical commission and ultimately approval by the Board of Commissioners for the, and this protects inappropriate future development happening on the, on the site. And then in addition to this, the applicant has voluntarily offered two conditions, and I will say these are very important conditions because they've never been proposed anywhere in the township before. The first condit, set of conditions relates to this, the property as being subdivided, all of those future developments, the tract is being frozen today, and all future development within the boundaries of what we're talking about will be voluntarily subject permanently going forth to review by the historical commission and approval by the, by the township commissioners for their appropriateness. That's a tremendous level of protection going forward that has never been afforded with a subdivision. And then also, the applicant is proposing a voluntary restricted area along Monk Road. Monk Road has been, one of these areas has been discussed at length with the neighbors. Commissioner Grimes is very involved in bringing this about as well. And the applicant has proposed a voluntary restriction on the location of buildings along Monk Road and then ensuring that all future development in this area is also reviewed through historic preservation ordinances. And just to show that this is the area that staff is recommending to be, to be included as a restricted area. Now, restricted area doesn't show up in township codes, this is something that was brought about through negotiation with the applicant, that the applicant is voluntarily offering. This is the area that is shown in purple on the map. The area in green is required by code, the area in purple is voluntarily offered by the, by the applicant. And then just in addition to this, there's a lot of white. And the white is what I had mentioned earlier in my presentation, is currently protected by a number of township ordinances. If, and currently I say that if, no development is currently proposed, but if future development ever is, is proposed on this site, there are a number of township ordinances that could regulate the form and location of new development in this area. Staff recommends that the Building and Planning Committee accept, approve this application with the revised conditions sent by staff yesterday morning and this exhibit that's been agreed to by the applicant. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Luthring. So before we, before we go on, Mr. Brosman, I, I promise you the opportunity, if you want to make extremely brief comments given the hour, if you don't feel the need to, you don't, you don't have to, there will be opportunity for questions.
Thank you, George Brosman, representing the applicant, I, I will try to be brief. I want to hone in on the, on the issue that I think remains open, but I don't want people to forget, and I think Chris did a good job, of all the extra things that Mr. Birch already agreed to. Very important are those conditions in number fourteen that Chris alluded to that basically says even with a subdivision, all of the new lots will remain subject to the historic Class One designation. And all of the improvements will have to go through approval. And then there's condition number two, that again makes clear if there's any further subdivision, any additional units ought to be added, full review process. So if I could ask Rob Lambert to briefly put up our plan?
Mr. Brosman, so we, we had a, we had a lengthy meeting a week ago where we went over the plan, and I think this is the plan that you discussed then, quite, quite literally, so, you know, unless it's absolutely necessary, I'm just going to.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the board, because we're, to focus in on the, the issue that is open is the Monk Road frontage. So I wanted to remind the board. The Mill Creek Road frontage is fully protected by preservation area, that's over a thousand feet. The Rose Glen frontage is fully protected by preservation area, that's over a thousand feet. The Monk Road area, without the restricted area that Mr. Birch is offering, has a preservation area which has the pasture that is on the historic list, that's about a thousand feet. This is almost over a half a mileage of frontage. The township did a scenic corridor study of the township, and Mill Creek Road is on that study, Monk Road is not. But nonetheless, Mr. Birch offered an additional restricted area of two hundred feet. That is what I would call compromise number one, and we showed you that last time. That two hundred feet area, as we said, doubles the setback. That adds an approximate additional three acres to the fifty-eight percent open spa, preservation area in green where fifty percent is required. Eight percent more preservation area on such a large property is over three, three acres extra. With compromise number two, that is now the one that staff is recommending, Mr. Birch expanded the restricted area, I believe we calculated it, it's up to almost four point two acres. This area here that Chris showed. So that, coupled with the thirty-nine acres of open space, we have forty-three acres of preservation area and restricted area, that's like sixty-three percent of the tract. So we feel that we have addressed all of the comments that were received and that a very, very high level of protection is provided for all of the road frontages, including Monk Road. And we ask that you quickly approve this plan so this plan can proceed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brosman, I'm going to open it up to the board for, for questions, I recognize Commissioner Grimes.
I don't have a question.
Or, you may make a statement.
Okay, thank you. You can, I don't have any questions for you, so you're welcome to sit down, thank you. Okay, well, thank you, President Sinai, I have a, a brief statement, I hope people will forgive me for reading. I expected to come before the board tonight to recommend conditions of approval that would secure a future for fifteen forty-three Monk Road without the threat of significant future development. I thought I was going to ask my colleagues on the board to approve a restricted area for the historic view shed on this Class One property that would prevent additional development in that view shed while allowing the owner, Mr. Birch, to build all the homes he requested in the manner he requested. This was going to be a win-win for the owner, the neighbors, historic preservationists, those who value open space in our entire township. Unfortunately, I can no longer achieve this goal for the community in its entirety. At about three-thirty this afternoon, after working with the community and the applicant on this application for nearly five months and on development of this property for over three and a half years, I was informed by President Sinai that our solicitor had opined that the Board of Commissioners cannot limit development prospectively on property that is not itself the subject of an application. In other words, we cannot pass conditions of approval limiting this applicant's right to put additional homes and improvements in the view shed. We must wait until he files an application to do that before the board can act. This was, to put it mildly, extremely disappointing news to me. In my opinion, our solicitor gave me very different advice just a week ago, and I have been telling staff and pretty much everyone in the community for months that I would not bend on protecting the entire view shed from Monk Road as far as a person could see. And I think everybody here knows I've been saying that for a long time. But nobody, not our solicitor nor our staff, contested this as exceeding the board's authority until three-thirty this afternoon. Although I question this turn of events, tonight I feel compelled to withdraw my amended conditions of approval. I cannot in good conscience ask this board to approve conditions that our solicitor has now indicated exceed our authority. I could, I think I could have secured board of approval of my version of the conditions of approval tonight and then wait to see if Mr. Birch would challenge them in court, but I don't think that's the responsible way to handle this. I am not sure that the legal advice I learned earlier today is correct. However, given that the applicant is entitled to an answer tonight, I don't have the luxury of time to wait for further analysis. I, I must ask the board to act based on the information and advice we have before us now. I realize that this change of plans may let many people down. Dozens of neighbors, Gladwin residents, preservation advocates, and other township residents have advocated to limit excessive development of this property for years, and I'm sure most will be shocked and disappointed by what I'm saying tonight. I deeply regret that. On the other hand, if the board approves the owner's conditions of approval tonight, which for point of clarity are what Chris is, is what Chris is recommending also, there is much to be proud of. Mr. Birch will get approval for the three new homes and the additional homes in the existing estate buildings, as he should. There will also be a substantial buffer along Monk Road, not as much as I would like, but that buffer will have no new development. Nearly forty acres of the property will become preservation area where development will be, will be prohibited. And there will be no new, and there will be new paths on Monk Road and Mill Creek Road for the enjoyment of pedestrians. And most importantly, as Mr. Brosman said, any new improvements in the view shed or anywhere else on the property must still be reviewed by the historical commission and approved by the Board of Commissioners. Bottom line is that the approval of the current application will still promote the faithful preservation of this irreplaceable estate. It is, it is a far better plan before us tonight than the hundred seventy-three unit continuing care facility initially applied for and the approximately twenty-seven home plan that the owner also put forward. And by the way, assuming the owner, the board approves the owner's conditions of approval tonight, I certainly hope he will, he will withdraw those other applications. The one significant point missing is added protection for the remainder of the historic view shed. But by approving this application, we're not giving up any rights to protect that asset. The entire property will remain a Class One historic resource. If this owner or a future one makes another application that would diminish the view shed in any material way, we will resume our efforts to protect its integrity. So let me thank everyone who supported our efforts to ensure this property's total preservation. Neighbors, township residents, the Gladwin Civic Association, open space advocates, community leaders, and a majority of my fellow commissioners who were supportive of my efforts and I believe prepared to support, support me tonight. If you're a member of the public and came prepared to offer comment tonight during public comment on this matter about Linden Hill and the importance of preserving the view shed, I hope you will still do that. Your thoughts and opinions are valued and should be heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Grimes, thank you very much. So here's how we're going to do this, if people have genuine questions, allow for genuine questions, I do want to allow for public comment before we have our commissioner comment. But anyone have genuine questions? Okay, with that, I mean, we have, anyone here for public comment? Okay, with that, maybe we have, anyone here for public comment? If you do, please, please come up to the podium and state your name and where you live.
Good evening, I'm Debbie Gross, I live on Monk Road. And we have been working with a lot of neighbors and Mr. Birch and Commissioner Grimes on this property for a number of years, and it has taken many iterations. I want us all to make sure that first we're on the same page, because the document that's outside with the agenda is not the document that we're discussing today, so I want to make sure that that's clear here. And the document that you are discussing, that the conditions of agreement is the email that Mr. Birch or Mr. Brosman worked with Mr. Lesswing on, so that you have the right document that you're looking at. Because if that's the case, then as neighbors, we are pleased to have an agreement. You know, I know this is just the beginning of the process, but I really do think that there has been a thorough listening to the neighbors of the concerns of having a large number of houses on our street that is a one-way street, where there are concerns that I've seen fire trucks not being able to get by because of the narrow street, believe it or not. So, I mean, I am pleased to see this, I understand that this has taken a while, I understand that the view shed is important, but you know, as long as these conditions are what we are all, we understand what they are, and that we will maintain the historic Class One preservation, then we agree with it, and we thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please come forward.
Hi, Karen Ite, Gladwin Civic Association. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Grimes for his incredible hard work over the last two and a half years. He has gone far, far out of his way to work with all of the residents in the Gladwin Civic Association on this. And when I first moved to Gladwin 22 years ago now, they were working on the Fenimore project. One of the most important issues with Fenimore was the view shed. The view shed is a half a mile long, it's a huge wide swath, and it was incredibly important. It bifurcated actually both the housing developments, one is on the street and the other one is in cul-de-sacs. That being said, I think in the future, that everyone needs to look, something has to be done with view sheds or restricted areas or something for historical properties moving forward. I think that we need to look at this. I think that Mr. Birch has been incredibly nice about making sure that he's had a lot of restricted area put in, however, I think that it would have been nice for the neighbors to keep the historical view shed that you now see, which goes much further back. But like the neighbors, the Gladwin Civic Association is happy to have this move forward, and we're happy after all of this time to have this move forward. But again, thank you, Commissioner Grimes.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, please come forward.
Laura Gillen, Haverford Civic, excuse me, Haverford Station Historic District is where I live. And I'm very confused by a couple of these issues, and the version of the conditions of approval that I'm reading, on 14 says deleted, addressed by condition two, and then has sub paragraphs, and those are the sub paragraphs of most concern to me. I'm not sure how you can take a Class One resource, and I've looked up, I've gotten the information from the database for that historic resource, what is defined there, I don't find the word pasture, and I think the word view shed is being incorrectly applied because by my read, the Secretary of the Interior applies view shed as looking from the property out, not what the neighbors can see of the property. So I don't know why that term has suddenly become vogue, and why... I had a great conversation a couple of years ago with one of the members of the Pennsylvania Historic and Museums Commission, he said, people love to legislate other people's property, and I think that's what we're seeing here. It's very strange to me that we would take the other subdivided lots and label them as Class One resources when they have no Class One resource on the grounds, and subject them to Historic Commission review. It almost seems like you're creating Historic District with contributing and non-contributing resources, and it is so twisted right now, I can't make heads or tails of it. I'm not sure that anybody in the future is going to be, and I think this sets a very bad precedent, even though it was a condition offered by the applicant, I don't think it's right to label those additional lots as Historic Resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from anyone in the room? Jody, do we have any public comment in mind?
Yes, there is, we have several. Maureen McGinn, Monica Beebo...
Okay, so maybe you could just give me one at a time, so...
Maureen McGinn.
Okay, Maureen McGinn.
Hi, thank you, Maureen McGinn, I'm the director at the Lower Marion Conservancy. Conservancy is a member-supported nonprofit organization that protects open space, preserves historic architecture, and conserves the local watershed. From the testimony we shared at the meeting last week, the board and public know that protecting the open space and historic landscape of 1543 Monk Road is a priority for us. The setting of the property is critical to its history, design, and significance. The Conservancy believes that the plan in the application represents and respects the integrity of the setting by positioning the proposed houses away from areas that historically provided sweeping views from Monk Road. It also limits development on the site. That said, we as a land trust and Historic Reservation organization think ahead, and we closely look at applications that leave a property vulnerable to future subdivision and development. And we are especially concerned about development opportunities that exist on large parcels. And these are very large parcels that we are looking at and considering here. So we understand that the plan before us today might seem good right now, but we also know that this land, with all of its open space and historic importance, is still at risk, and can continue to be carved up and subdivided and developed into the future. So what the Conservancy would like to see is some permanent protections placed on 1543 Monk Road, and have some insurance that one way or another, the most vulnerable and sensitive areas of this property have protections and that future development is contained. Thank you very much for listening to our comments.
Thank you very much. Jody, who is next?
Monica Beebo.
Hi, good evening, I'm Monica Beebo, I live at 1600 Monk Road, I'm directly across the street from Bob Birch's estate. We are also, our home is also considered a Class One historic, and we take great pride in owning such an important piece of property. When we bought our home, we knew it was a Class One historic, and we understood the responsibility that came with it. I appreciate all of Josh Grimes' hard work and his efforts to minimize development at 1543 Monk Road, and to maintain its historical significance. I appreciate his efforts to maximize the view shed, the pasture, whatever you want to call it, to maximize the view, and to protect, and for all of our benefits, and with respecting to the historical description, which includes the pastures. I also appreciate Bob Birch's most recent proposal in trying to maintain some sort of historic meaning to the entire property by minimizing development and making the new single-family homes architecturally consistent with the existing historic structures. I believe that if this plan is approved and is built as Bob Birch has proposed today, with five lots and three homes, all being developed behind the permanently restricted areas, then it'll be a good outcome for us all, and the tentative sketch plan should move forward this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Mercer.
Okay, Mr. Mercer.
Yes, hi, Dan Mercer, Winwood. My comment is about the condition 17 concerning the trail along Mill Creek Road. So I was just curious about how the trail's going to go all the way down to River Road since the 1642 and 1643, the parcels at 1642 and 1643 Monk Road extend, appear to extend all the way to the roadway. So, you know, Mr. Birch can agree to have a trail go partially down Mill Creek Road, but then you'd have to cross over the guard rail and walk in the roadway for the rest of the way. Also, there's not really much between the roadway and the creek on the property owned by 1642 Monk Road. So, I mean, it's a great idea. There's also, at the intersection of Rose Glen and Mill Creek, there's about a 15-to-20 foot high retaining wall, that's partially collapsed. I imagine that the trail would go on top of that retaining wall, but that would also be a concern. So, yeah, so I know the condition says, without significant alteration to existing conditions, you know, fixing a 15-foot or 20-foot tall retaining wall. Now, it may not be Mr. Birch's responsibility there, it might be a township-owned retaining wall, I have no idea, but you know, it'd be nice to see some of these concerns addressed going forward. It would be a great connector to the Flat Rock Park, so, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mercer. Jody, do we have anyone else?
Sean McMurtry.
Okay, Ms. McMurtry.
Hi, thank you, I live in Marion Station, and when I read these documents, maybe last month, I remember being concerned about the number of trees that were allowed to be taken down, and the slope, and so I wonder what the impact on the neighboring environment will be, and, you know, I'm more concerned, I guess, about that, I don't live on Monk Road, to talk about the view shed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jody, is that it?
That is it.
Did we have any comments submitted in advance that I've lost track of?
Um, hang on one second.
I don't think we did, right?
There was one, it was a question, but Sam had actually answered that.
Yeah, that question has been answered. Okay, so, thank you, and thank you for everyone who spoke. I think...
Can I respond to those?
Yes, please do.
Just very quickly, it's getting late, I want to respond to two of the comments. Respect to Mr. Mercer's comment, let me be clear, because others have asked about this, the path that the applicant is being asked to allow will be along Mill Creek Road, that is what the township is able to ask for. We are not, we have not asked for it, nor has the owner given the right to give a path through his property, and he certainly has no obligation to do that. This will be, it is along his property, along Mill Creek Road, and the point of it is so that people can walk safely, instead of what many do right now, which is walk in the middle of Royal Creek Road, which is kind of taking a lot of chances. With respect to Ms. McMurtry's comment about the trees, I would point out condition of approval number five, which requires the applicant to comply with the Natural Features Conservation Code, and I quote, "including but not limited to minimizing the number of viable trees that will be removed for construction of the dwellings or other improvements." Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Grimes. Any commissioner comments? Commissioner Bernhardt.
Thank you very much, and before I get to the principal comment I want to make, and I promised to be brief, you know, some acknowledgements, and one to Mr. Brosman, who's been involved in this, not to the level of Commissioner Grimes, but quite a bit, and Mr. Brosman has always demonstrated himself when he appears before this board, is a strong advocate for his client, and always very respectful and professional, and this certainly was no exception, and, you know, thank you for all your hard work. But throughout the course of this, I've had the opportunity to speak with a large number of the neighbors and members of Gladwin Civic, including Karen Ite, who was kind enough to wait here this evening, amongst others, and we appreciate that, to speak, and I think earlier today, Karen's comment to me in reference to Commissioner Grimes, that this may be the hardest thing he ever worked on in his life, and those of us who have been close to it and have watched for the years of what he has done, may wonder if that in fact is true. The comment that was made is, it's a far better plan, and indeed it is, and while it is not our protocol to go ahead and single somebody out like that, to fail to acknowledge that the fact that it's a far better plan because of the work of Commissioner Grimes would be an error, and I just don't want that to occur. What you've heard from a couple of these people who have spoken this evening, recognizing the work of Commissioner Grimes, is miniscule to that which I have received in conversations with many of them, very, very grateful for all that has been done, and while there may have been some, we'll just say, misunderstanding, whatever it is, on some of the legal requirements that are out there, I think the end result of this plan is good for everybody, and this is going to be something that's going to work out well. I think the view shed, or whatever we want to call it, that's what I've been calling it for a long period of time, this will work out well, there's protection that is built in there, and as I said, I will try to be brief, but Josh, good job, thank you very much.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Zoff.
Last week I said we should celebrate this proposal, and it's worth saying a second time. Mr. Birch is a remarkable steward, and I expect him to continue to be so, of this property. There will be three new country estates on 70 acres, designed by a renowned architect. There are many protections in our code, and there are protections beyond our code that have been agreed to by the applicant. And this is the first round, this is tentative sketch, there's another round of meetings, public meetings called preliminary plan. The owner has proposed less in the way of a subdivision than his property rights would Commissioner Grimes works very hard for Gladwin, and at times he is wrongly criticized. He has, can take great pride, I think, in where this proposal is today. This is one that I see is a win-win-win for the neighborhood, the community, and for the property owner. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zoff. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, President Sinai, and I also want to give accolades to Commissioner Grimes for, I think, this week alone, he probably had no shortage of 20 or 30 phone calls just among us, not including members of the public and the civic, and the applicant and the applicant's representation. So, thank you, and the work shows that we're looking at something now to really honor a really incredible property that we're blessed to have here in Lower Marion Township. Along those lines, the use of the restricted area is one that I mentioned last week, and I'm glad that it's sort of off the table as an extension, or a broadened kind of impact to this property, because technically speaking, this is not a recognized instrument that we use in our planning wheelhouse here. It is a concept that we haven't applied anywhere else in the township, whether it's a historic area or not, or a historic property or not, and maybe this is an important thing to consider in the future, in which case I agree with Karen Ite from the Civic Association, others who say that it's probably time to take a look at how we weave in a reserve area within a parcel, if it is in fact that important to us to really address what individuals see from the road into properties. So I hope that we can continue those conversations, and of course, so happy to be supportive of this this evening, so thank you to all, and especially to Mr. Birch.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, you already...
This is one sentence, I just neglected to thank Chris Lesswing and our staff for their dedicated time and effort working with the applicant and Commissioner Grimes on this project.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Okay, so seeing that, I will go. So let me start by saying that Commissioner Grimes works tirelessly... me start by saying that Commissioner Grimes works tirelessly and possibly infinitely on behalf of the residents of his ward, um, and, uh, I, I got to appreciate that in my brief time, that I've been, uh, president of this board, and, uh, everyone in Gladwin should be grateful for his efforts, and I think what we've heard tonight is that people genuinely are. Um, I will, I will also say that, uh, you, when I think about the things that we have in our code, let me preface it by saying, to be clear, what Commissioner Grimes was seeking was certainty for the residents about what could happen on this property, rather than have it be subject to a review in the future. Right? That is basically what it boiled down to. And, you know, uh, I, I appreciate that effort. I, I think, when I think about what the elements are that govern what can be done on properties in this township, whether it's a historic resource overlay district, whether it's open space, whether you can't build on steep slopes, whether you can't build in, you know, near, near creeks and streams, to me, the one that is actually the most important is the one that deals with the public realm. What is it about the property that can be seen from the street? Because that is the one that has an impact on the township that we have a public interest in. And on these historic properties, there is a definite public interest. Let me just quote you from our Historic Resource Overlay District, where it says, "Preservation and protection of buildings, structures, and sites are public necessities and are in the interests of the health, prosperity, and welfare of the people of Lower Marion Township." One of the elements of that, it says we should encourage the converse, the conservation of historic settings and landscapes. It says we should retain the visual character of the building in the grounds surrounding it, as if they were designed, sorry, as they were designed, and/or as they have traditionally been maintained. There is a public interest in this, in this township. It is a key defining characteristic of this township. We have been fortunate that we have property owners who, through the goodness of their hearts, have been maintaining it, but that is a difficult thing to rely on, and Commissioner Grimes was trying to require it rather than to trust it, and for that he should be commended. I will say that, you, we, you, as, as, as some of the residents said, uh, you, that we do need to take a look at this, because our code contemplates conversions rather than subdivisions, and there may not be truly a meaningful distinction between those in practice, even if there was legally. But having said that, whatever happens on this property does come back in front of this board. I think it is pretty clear that Class One properties do require consideration in this township of what we would all colloquially at least call a view shed, in the view from the street into the property. And so I look forward to having this property come back as it has been, you know, proposed to us and as it is intended, which is consistent with the values that we have in this township. And when it does, I look forward to us passing it quickly and with little debate, uh, and that will be a tremendous, as we said, win-win for the township when that happens. So with that, I think we've heard everything. We'll call this for a vote. I was hoping you'd motion. I will make a motion. I have to do this, uh, that we would have this approved, the, uh, uh, recommend, a move that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners, approval of a tentative sketch plan dated September sixteen, twenty twenty-one, uh, that shows a subdivision of four lots totaling sixty-eight point seven acres into five lots. The proposed, proposed plan will retain existing Class One historic structures on two lots, and three new dwellings are shown to be constructed in each of the remaining three lots, while conserving three ninety acres of preservation area. Access to the track will be provided along Monk Road for all five lots, requiring two shared drives, with Lot One being the only proposed parcel with its own point of access. Proposed lots two and three will share an access easement through Lot One and a separate shared driveway, and Lots Four and Five will have shared a driveway running through Lot Four, and I will propose that we, uh, that I, I move that we approve it with the amended conditions as recommended by staff. Do I have a second? Commissioner, we call. Thank you. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm abstaining.
Yep. Jody, do you have a count?
Uh, thirteen in favor, one abstention.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, and I guess with that, that closes the business of the Building and Plank Committee this evening, uh, and we turn to the Board of Commissioners. So, you'll have to bear with me. This is my first time doing this particular part of it. Uh, so we'll call us to order, uh, and will the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Lower Marion please come to order, and we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America, two republically representative stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So before we start, uh, as some of you may know, former Ward Eight Commissioner Charlie Ward passed away recently. Um, we were going to observe a moment of silence, but before we do, Commissioner Zelloff will make some remarks about Mr. Ward, whom he knew well.
Thank you, President Sinai. Just a few weeks after the passing of another long-serving Lower Marion Commissioner, former Commissioner Charlie Ward passed away. Service was in Charlie's blood. He served early morning mass before school. Charlie served for two years in the Army in the Korean War. He joined the Board of Commissioners, representing the Eighth Ward, in nineteen eighty. Charlie Ward served for fourteen years, and for Board President for eleven of those fourteen years, a record, and they were eleven consecutive years longer than any president before or since. He was the first president to propose a split of his term when the board was split seven-seven. Charlie was a quiet leader who commanded respect. He was firm and fair and nonpartisan. Now, despite rumors to the contrary, our current ward system was not named after Charlie. Charlie Ward continued to serve Lower Marion Township up. Quickly, some of his accomplishments. He championed revitalization of the Ardmore Business District. He was a founding director of the Board of Ardmore House. He was instrumental in passing an ordinance to preserve open space. He was instrumental in a new public works complex and fire training tower. He introduced mandatory recycling in this township, something we take for granted, and he recommended a township-wide rezoning study. Some things never change. Charlie continued to serve this township after his service as a commissioner. He was a founder of the Ardmore Business Improvement District, originally called Ardmore Two Thousand, now called the Ardmore Initiative. He joined that board right after he retired as a commissioner, and he chaired it for longer than he was president of this board. The Charlie, the Charles F. Ward Service to Ardmore Award was established in his honor. Winners emulate Charlie's selflessness, his integrity, his leadership in their service to Ardmore. Charlie and I got to know each other when I began my service on this board. We also shared the same birthday. Charles Francis Ward passed away on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. He was ninety-two. Thank you.
Thank you. I ask that we all stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. Madam Secretary, uh, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bernheim?
Present.
Mr. Churchill?
Here.
Mr. Courtney?
Present.
Mr. Gavron?
Present.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Ms. S. Kramer?
Here.
Ms. G. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. McComb?
Here.
Mr. McCain?
Here.
Ms. O'Neill?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Present.
Mr. Whalen?
Here.
Mr. Zelloff?
Here.
Mr. Sinai?
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quarrel.
Thank you, Jody. Um, so let me start by, uh, approval of minutes. I've moved that we approve minutes of a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on December first, twenty twenty-one, and a stating meeting, a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, as distributed, drive a second. Thank you vice president Gavron. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Uh, some announcements. The board met an executive session on January twelfth and earlier this evening, January nineteenth, to receive reports from its professional staff regarding litigation, personnel matters, Lower Marion School District, coronavirus, and fourteen hundred Mill Creek Road. So, this now is a section of our meeting where members of the public may address the board on any non-agenda items, uh, or any other public matters in which the township has jurisdiction or authority. Uh, I would ask, especially considering the lateness of the hour, that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and I don't see a group of people speaking on the same topic, but if there is one, please have a spokesperson, uh, be selected to address the board. Please come forward. Um, you just, uh, state your name and...
Uh, John Willis. I'm a resident of Ardmore, of the wood of Ardmore. I'm also a member of Save Oakwell, uh, Stoneley's sister. Um, Save Oakwell, Oakwell is a rapidly growing group of Lower Marion parents, residents, students, and professionals from all over the township, from all sections of the township. Uh, Save Oakwell's mission is to prevent the bulldozing, bulldozing and flattening of Oakwell, uh, which is an historic woodland area at eighteen thirty-five County Line Road in Villanova. Many of you may be quite familiar with it. It is adjacent to, just north of Stoneley. Um, this is a fourteen-acre property, as I said. Um, it is as large as the Barnes Arboretum. Imagine, uh, the Barnes Arboretum being flattened, all the trees taken off the Barnes Arboretum, in order to accommodate a few fields for athletic teams, uh, that would be used maybe only five or six months a year. Um, as Chris Lesswing has stated, uh, a while ago, this area is majestic. Um, yet the administration of the school district, uh, the former administration, hopefully not the current one, uh, wants four hundred and twenty-five trees to be clear cut and, uh, wants the entire fourteen acres to be leveled to used for two to three athletic team fields, two to three. Not for the, not for all the teams, and not for phys ed, just for athletic teams. This, um, there is an important zoning hearing board meeting, uh, next week. It's occurring on Monday at seven fifteen PM. It's going to happen in this meeting room, and, uh, all of your many constituents involved, uh, want to commend and thank, uh, the new, or I should say, acting, uh, Member of the Zoning Hearing Board Secretary, and that is Scott Houches. Uh, I haven't met him yet, um, but Scott, as you know, um, is involved now, uh, for being the zoning officer, and he has been tremendously responsive and tremendously cooperative in dealing with all of our inquiries about the mechanics and the procedures involving, uh, the zoning hearing board appeals procedures. So, uh, with that, I have nothing further to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, please come forward.
I was actually not going to say anything this evening, but yet again, um, I understand you met in executive session, and one of the topics was LMSD. That seems to come up a lot, that there's a lot of behind-the-scenes discussions about LMSD, and I look forward to when those discussions can come out in public. I know there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, working one-on-one with other members of the Board of School Directors and between township staff and LMSD staff, and I really appreciate all of that work. I look forward to maybe seeing some of the, um, intergovernmental meetings happen this year. Um, and I also commend you that on the, the dialed-down rhetoric, I haven't heard as much acrimony this year, and I, I really do appreciate it. I'm just going to ask that you stay wary of that. There are two electorate, um, bodies in this community, and the Board of Commissioners is one of them, and the Board of School Directors is the other, and you got to trust us that we are holding them accountable just as much as we are holding you all accountable. Um, I spent two hours on the phone with Jim Lil about trees. I know how hard they are working. I know how hard this staff is working. Um, let's just please keep the acrimony really low, and remember that we're all working together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. I'm Ben Driscoll. I live in Wynwood. Some of my comments are follow-up from when I was here last month. Uh, as I asked you last month, with, has anybody from the township asked if natural lands, Stoneley, would take some of the structures on eighteen thirty-five and eighteen hundred Montgomery Road, relocate them to school district over, if that's a desire for them to take them? If you've asked them, what's the answer? If you haven't asked them, why haven't you asked them? Uh, my next point, I'll, I'll cut to the chase. Perhaps the ARP money round two can be used to fund the count, the sidewalk on County Line Road, and the disparity that's there currently in the CIP would then disappear. Uh, last month, they also asked about the intersection improvements in Montgomery Avenue, North Supremeville Road. School district's contribution arose from a condition of approval in building Black Rock Middle School at eighteen sixty. Mr. Gavin responded that he was confused how this violated the MPC. He stated this contribution was agreed to, and whatever the school district's motivations in agreeing, they nonetheless agreed. He went on to say that this contribution was not forced upon the school district. First, let me respond by reading the actual section. It says, "No municipality should have the power to require as a condition of approval of land development or subdivision application the construction, dedication, or payment of any off-site improvements or capital expenditures of any nature whatsoever, or impose any contribution in lieu thereof." The history is simple. The imposition of this fee came after the condition of approvals ratified by this board, so the contribution today from the school district is in lieu thereof of that improper condition of approval. The fee is therefore a fruit from a poisonous tree. In attempting to defend this position, Mr. Gavin made assertions at the meeting last month about lack of force and agreement. However, Mr. Gavin, you conveniently ignored portions of the history of this community that got us to this point. Temporary classrooms are at Penwin Elementary, with the condition of approval that they, they can remain for every two years pending further approval from this board. A community member came to this very room and stood at the, at this very podium and demanded that this board, quote, "hold the school district's fee to the fire," and it blatant a statement that the school district addressed its enrollment growth at some address other than at a Penwin Elementary, and do so in a timely manner, the two-year window. You complied with that request. You put in a time-based guillotine over the temporary classrooms. Should this board have become displeased with the school district, challenging this fee in court, delaying the opening of Black Rock Middle School, you could have easily dropped your guillotine, regardless of any enrollment or educational issues at that time. To now say that the school district wasn't directly or implicitly forced by the totality of this board's actions is absurd. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room for public, um, privilege? Uh, Jody, do we have anyone online?
Uh, just Ms. Seltzer.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Hello, Adrianne Seltzer, uh, Wynwood. Um, might I suggest that the discussion on the allocation of the second part of the ARP funds be done at a community public conversation that includes those without internet access? I think the comment procedure at the board meeting is not conducive to discussion, since the board members do not even have to acknowledge that a resident has even spoken, and that resident does not have the chance for rebuttal or additional comments or clarifications. As I yelled at my screen of how many civics are not active, and how many people actually go to the civic meetings, I want to thoroughly agree with Mr. Steve's comments that greater community outreach be part of the next part of the allocation of those ARP funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seltzer.
We also have Ms. Sean McMurtry.
Okay, Ms. McMurtry.
Thank you. Sean McMurtry. I live in Marion Station, and my question is, have any of the commissioners looked at the site of the new middle school? Because it is a fortress of hardscape, and I am surprised in the world that we live in today that we can afford that much hardscape in a neighborhood, and I would ask you all to look at the site because it really looks like there is enough room of flat space on site for every single field that the school district is insisting that they need. That includes baseball and softball and soccer, and they currently have a... And on a football field, you can also play, you know, lots of other sports. Soccer can be fit into that. There's a lot of multipurpose use for fields that I think are not being employed on the site. I am actually shocked at the egregious amount of money that is being spent. And I believe there are unintended consequences for this project that will include diluting the existing sports teams. If we add a third set of teams to Lower Marion, are we going to not have enough pitchers for teams? Are we going to have three teams that are not equipped with the right talent, with the right number of players, and have to forfeit games? Are we also going to have the unintended consequence of needing to bus children from Ballackin Wood, Gladwin, for instance, all the way out to Villanova to play on fields there? Again, because we need only two teams, not three. So I would urge you all to go to the site of Black Rock, take a really good look at how the space is being used, and ask yourselves if in two years, if in five years, we are going to have a serious issue with stormwater management because of the current plan, and how could we even afford to bulldoze another tree for fields that, by the way, to date, the school district has not shown a needs analysis for to prove that they even need these fields? Thank you.
Thank you. Jody, do we have anyone else online?
We do not.
Okay. Thank you. We have nothing that was submitted in advance. Does any Board member wish to respond to any of the comments? Commissioner Courtney.
Should have put my hand lower. You could have gone first. First, Ms. Gillan, you made this, a similar request at the Havreford Civic Association, and I gave you a less-than-productive response, and I apologize for that. You were right. We should have public intergovernmental meetings. And should President Sinai see fit to retain me as the Chair of the Intergovernmental Committee, I will work with my counterparts in the school district to set one up, to update the community on what we've been discussing with regards to Arnold Field, with regards to the Black Rock Middle School fields, and a number of other topics. Mr. Driscoll, we've had several conversations. I think you're right that we should look into the funding of the County Line sidewalk. I don't necessarily think it needs to be ARP, but we should be treating both institutions along that sidewalk the same. That includes Stoneley and the school district. And then lastly, with regards to Ms. McMurtry's comment about whether Black Rock Middle School could put their fields on site, we've been, Commissioner Gavron and I have been working very closely with School Board President Lucy Klein and Vice President Peter Lee on this topic. We have proposed several different configurations, and with the number of fields that they need and the use that they need, I believe them when they say it is not possible to fit all of those fields onto the Black Rock Middle School site. And everyone here is aware that I am opposed to cutting down the trees at the current, currently proposed field site at 1835 County Line Road. I am optimistic that we will find alternatives and be able to discuss those with the community at a future intergovernmental meeting soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Courtney. Vice President Gavron.
Thank you, President.
If I could interrupt for one second, sorry. Dan Mercer was on screen, and I didn't realize it, to make public comment.
Oh, I, okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Mercer, we apologize. Please make your comment.
Oh, sure. This is Dan Mercer in Wynwood. Yes, I'd like to echo Adrianne and Mike's points about having public meetings concerning the AR, AR, whatever it is, the funding, the second round. And also, I think it'd be useful to have public meetings concerning contentious issues like lights on Arnold Field and the middle school fields. I think there's a lot of back and forth on Facebook. People don't understand why the light poles have to be so high. They don't understand this, and it's just, it's, I think it's needlessly, creates a needless amount of conflict, at least on Facebook, with people arguing with each other. Whereas if they could go to a meeting, hear some, you know, experts discuss this, and they would have a better understanding of these issues. One thing that has come up with the middle school field issue is residents seem to be completely unaware of the hundreds of acres of forested land that the previous generations of commissioners have, have preserved in the township. Residents are astounded that there's a 90-acre park across the Mill Creek Road from Rolling Hill. I don't know, just, I think a kiosk with the maps of all the trails in Lower Marion and all the parks, having one at Rolling Hill would be, you know, very helpful. You know, it's great to have a 90-acre park too for my own personal use when I visit it, but it seems kind of silly. You know, I don't think people know about Henry Lane Park. They don't know about the trails through the Henry Foundation and all sorts of things. So it would just be nice. Also, I mean, there's also other things, the preserved open space as a result of the open space ordinance. The front of Harrington is probably the best habitat in the whole township. The retention basin's there, but across the street, there's Wheeler's Woods at Beaumont, and then, you know, the Harrington Farms, the preserved wetlands in that area. In the fall, there's thousands of birds in that area. It's just, I don't think people are aware of all these great things, so it'd just be good for the township, the school district, and other people to sort of make these things more known. So, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mercer.
Okay, Jody, that definitely is it, right?
That is really it.
Okay, thank you very much. Vice President Gavron.
Thank you, President Sinai. I just want to quickly respond and thank Ms. Gillan for her comments. It has been an absolute pleasure to work with the current School Board and Administration. I believe we will come to a solution for Black Rock, for Arnold Field, and for other joint initiatives that meet the needs of the school district and the community at large. And I look forward, as Commissioner Courtney said, to continuing to work with President Klein and Vice President Lee. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? So, seeing none, this will turn to public comment. This is a section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any agenda items. Again, like before, please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and please come to the podium, introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Gary Brandeis. I'm from Villanova, now Havreford. First, thank you for your service, commissioners and staff. I'm very jealous of your patience. I'm not sure I could sit in your seat, so thank you. I'm the developer of the Mount Mauro Sewer Extension. I want to thank Commissioner Gavron for all of his help and guidance in helping us shepherd this project through the township. It was in November of 2018 when we first met with the neighborhood, and Commissioner Gavron was there with members of the staff. And so it was, it was a long, tedious process, but happy to say that we got it done, and I appreciate the opportunity for you to vote on the dedication tonight. Most importantly, I'd really like to thank the township staff. Amazing. I've worked in townships all throughout the Commonwealth and the Northeast. I'm a real estate, in real estate development. Just to mention a few names, Bob Duncan, who I know has since retired. Amazing. Paul McElhaney, Jerry Adams, Mary Beth Beck, Angela Forney, Colleen Hall. Amazing people to work with, just really, it makes me proud to be a resident of this township. Great working with Ed Pluchenechek at Pinoni. Thank you Solicitor High for your, for your help and guidance with all the various documents we needed, and there was a lot more than I thought there would be. So thank you, and thank you very, very much. Essentially, we extended the public sewer to 17 homes, five of which, including my home, were in danger of not having any options for septic because of regulatory and DEP regulations. We've solved that problem. We've given those homes a new lease on life. One home in particular was abandoned by the owner. There were squatters. It was vacant. It was deteriorating condition. That home's now been purchased and subject for redevelopment. They're in for permits right now. So that home's been saved. The value of that home, the value of the homes on the street has been protected. So we've done really good work here, and I really appreciate the opportunity. I've learned a significant amount more about septic systems and sewer systems than I ever thought I wanted to. I would like to mention to the, to the commissioners, just a brief warning. Many, many homes in our township were built in the 1960s and 70s when septic systems were allowed to be built on very small parcels of land. Those are no longer allowed under DEP regulations. I think you're going to see what happened to Mount Mauro happen in many other neighborhoods across our township where you have these small, these neighborhoods with homes close together, where the septic systems still sit in the front of the house in long pits about 30 to 40 feet deep. Those are no longer allowed by, by the DEP. You now need almost a half an acre to either have a drip system or a mound system. Many homes don't have the acreage for that. My home had a high water table. The soil wouldn't perk. I can imagine now that I, from what I know about sewer and septic systems, that there's going to be many other neighborhoods in our township that have similar problems. So I think the issue with public sewer and access to public sewer in Lower Marion Township is going to be a continuing issue. You may not have folks like me that are willing to dig in and get it done on a private side, but it's going to be an issue. But thank you very much. I'm grateful for the opportunity to work with everybody, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandeis, and thank you for the heads up. Anyone else in the room wishing to make public comment? Jody, do we have anyone online for public comment?
Let me take a look. We do not.
We do not. Okay. So we had two written comments. Michael Pollak from Ardmore wrote in opposition to the suburban square development, and he also wrote in support of referring the application for 33 Kirkett Avenue back to Harb. Does any Board member wish to respond to any of the comments? All right, seeing none. That moves us to the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? Okay. So I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented and including the items from our earlier Finance Committee and Building and Plant Committee meetings. Thank you, Vice President Gavron, for a second. Madam Secretary, we call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Aye.
Mr. Gavron.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McComb.
Yes.
Mr. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zellout.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The consent calendar is duly adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. So we are now moving to 33 Kirkett Avenue, which is on page 18. We have a certificate of appropriateness, and I guess I will put this in as a motion. I move that we approve referring an application seeking retroactive approval to replace the door in 3601 windows of the second floor of the side of the building facing Kirkett Terrace back to the Historical Architectural Review Board for recommendation. Do I have a second? Thank you, President Gavron. Vice President Gavron. Okay. Do we have any commissioner comments, I guess? No? All right. Any public comment?
No public comment. We already did.
Now we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Any opposed? Any sentience? I believe that passes unanimously. And that takes us to one last, I'm sorry. Jody, are we on to 533 Maison Place?
Yes.
Okay. So this is, this is going to be quick because this is a addition to our Historic Resource Inventory that was withdrawn, but we already had this, you know, here on the, I guess on the agenda before that happened, and so we actually have to open the hearing and then close it. So I will open, we have an ordinance to amend the code of the township of Lower Marion, Chapter 8180, the Historic Resource Inventory, add 533 Maison Place as Historic Resource Inventory as a Class II resource. I'm opening the public hearing. The applicant has withdrawn this request to add the property add to Historic Resource Inventory. Therefore, I will close the public hearing, and the Board will take no action on the ordinance. So I hereby close the public hearing. Did I do that correctly?
Seems to.
Okay. The next amendment on the agenda is on page 21, and that's the adoption of ordinance, Chapter 126 Sewers, and Chapter 8167 Fees, creating Sewer District Number Six and establishing connection fees. So I move that we amend the code of the township of Lower Marion, Chapter 126 Sewers, to create Sewer District Number Six comprising those properties on Mount Mora Road and Muston Lane in the township specifically as follows. 726, 727, 731, 732, 738, 746, 750, 753, 754, 758, 761, 764, 768, 769, 775, Mount Mora Road, and 733 and 736 Muston Lane, and to amend Chapter 8167 Fees to establish a connection and tapping fee for such sewer district in the amount of, well, if we're going to do this with an amendment. So, so in amount of 12 million, sorry, $12,286.44 for each connection, and, but we were going to move this with an amendment to the connection and tapping fee to change the amount of that $12,286.44 to $11,551.14, and to the amount of the special purpose part in Section 2 of the ordinance to be $10,551.14 to correct a, basically, an error in how it was put. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice President Gavron. So any questions for, for staff or comments from commissioners?
What were those numbers again?
It is...
I was wondering what...
You want the addresses, right? Okay.
I was wondering about flight times.
Okay, seeing none. Do we have public comment?
No, this is not a public...
Is that not a public comment? Okay. So then I'm just going to call the vote. All those, oh, sorry. Secretary Kelly, will you please call the roll?
For the adoption of ordinance 4235, Mr. Bernheim.
Yes.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Aye.
Mr. Gavron.
Definitely.
Mr....
Sorry.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McComb.
Yes.
Mr. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zellout.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Thank you. Now on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the Board? Any new business? Seeing none, that concludes the Board of Commissioners meeting for January 19th, 2022.